...on September 23rd, 2013. Town of Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearings pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, the Zoning Act, Section 5, on October 7th at 7:00 PM at the Deerfield Town Hall, 8 Conway Street, Deerfield, Mass. The purpose of this public hearing is to renew a request to rezone the parcel of land identified by the Deerfield Assessors Map 151 Lot 1, currently split between the Central Village Residential District CVRD and the Industrial District I. By placing the entirety of said lot in the Industrial District I, the letter requesting the zoning district revision is on file at the town clerk, with the town clerk at the Deerfield Town Hall, 8 Conway Street, Deerfield, Mass., and is available for inspection during regular business hours of the town clerk and can be found on the Deerfield Town website at www.dearfieldmass.us.
Yeah, we do have to pass that around.
We'll open up the meeting here at, what is it, 7:10?
Anything on that, Paul?
7:09, what's that?
You have something for people to sign in?
Here, let me see.
Yes, we have to have a sign in sheet, too.
So I'll just X out the people.
I'm just for the public hearing.
For the public hearing, okay. And why don't you keep this and take some notes until John?
Present.
Okay.
Present.
Okay.
Oh, good.
All right. We're starting at 7:09 with the, we're gonna pursue the Pervier zoning change request on their property at North Main Street. So, we're open for public comment.
Shall I come here?
That'd be fine, wherever you want to be, it's fine.
I am Don Dupendorf, an attorney from Williamstown. I'm here on behalf of the Pervières. This locates the property we're talking about. It's Lot 51, or Map 151 Lot 1. This is the base map from the town's website, and then this shows the overlay split between the two districts. The back, largest portions of this eight-plus acre property is in the industrial zone and the front end is in the Central Village District. The problem is a simple one. Given this split between the two zones, this lot is unusable. You simply can't get from the public street to the bulk of the lot. It is impermissible. You can't use the Central Village District as a way to pass to an industrial use because it's impermissible under the bylaw. It's also impermissible under state law. So, the owner of this property is in a unique position simply by accident of the bylaw of making no use whatsoever their property. The planning board in last year's deliberations over the zoning changed, changes preserved a right of access for this use, the Hardig industry use, and it was done intentionally to preserve that. This is the only other lot that needed the same relief but wasn't able to obtain it in the deliberations. So we're asking the board to make a recommendation, a positive recommendation to the town meeting that it remedy this issue. And the alternative is oblique. It's simply, the lot becomes unusable. I mean, so, the consequences to the owner are severe and that's what we're looking to remedy. How are you?
We opened the meeting at 7:09, John, and you're welcome to take over. We read the, we read the notice, and here's the file.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add just one more thing. One question that might be asked is why not make it all Central Village District? Problem with that is, to the north, it is industrial; to the south, it is industrial. You do that and you've got a spot zoning concern. One lot, one change, sticks out like a sore thumb. It remedies the access problem, but it exposes the town to a spot zoning challenge, and that was the other concern. So, that would've been a good outcome had it not been for the lot immediately to the south and then immediately to the north being in that district.
Anybody have any questions of the gentleman?
Yeah, I do. So, I live in the...
Can I just redo a sign-up sheet?
It's going around now.
People could just say their name.
But just announce who you are, too, when you come up.
I'm Dan Barroway. I actually live in this spot, sorry. I'm not familiar with this.
This is the lot.
This is the lot. Oh, okay. I live right here, which is the spot, which is actually just in front of that property, and which would be, I think, probably most affected by the change since on both sides of me, the south and to the north, just to the north by the thread, that, those two pieces are the part that would be rezoned. So, you know, I'm very concerned as to the impact, and so I dispute somewhat your claim that it's unusable because, in fact, up until recently, that farm was being, that property was being cultivated, as far as I could tell. I mean, there were tractors back there, there were things growing back there. So, it's not that it's completely unusable, right? It's to this, it's not usable for industrial purposes, right? And then there's another thing, which is this claim about, you know, this spot challenge for zoning. I don't see why the converse argument doesn't also apply, which is, if you're rezoning those pieces for industrial use, why is that not also a spot zoning problem, right? In fact, I would argue that if you were to make that back property residential, it's more consistent, right? Because it's next to a bunch of residential property, right? So, in any case, what I would like to ask you is, you know, what is driving this? Is there a particular purpose in mind? You know, I'm not necessarily ruling out, you know, I'm not necessarily opposed to any use of this, but I would like to know what use it's for. And the reason is that, you know, if it's zoned residential, sorry, if it's zoned industrial for any industrial purpose, that means that a factory could go back there. And, you know, I know Pelican has said that they're not interested in having a factory back there, but anybody could go back there and build a factory. On the other hand, if it's something like a solar plant, maybe I'm not so opposed to that. So, I'd like to know what the intended purpose is, and, you know, maybe you can answer that question.
Let me answer if, Mr. Chairman, shall I?
If I could just say, and I apologize for being late, and I'm John Waite, the chair, but I do want to make it clear that this is a public hearing, and so we heard from the proponent who brought it forward, and this is the attorney for that, and then we want to hear from the public, and so it's not necessarily a direct question and answer session here.
That's why I heard that.
Thank you very much.
Well, I have a question for...
So, just having said that, and I do want to remind people that zoning is, once you zone a property, it can be used for that new purpose according to the table. And so I don't want to get too bogged down in what the purpose today might be, because tomorrow it could change.
Right.
And so we want to be clear, and that's why those kind of questions, you know, it's great that we can answer, we can have a discussion, but to keep things moving, you've got to look at the big picture in the best interest of the town, so that's why I kind of want to throw that out.
Well, just for clarification, before our last town meeting when we rezoned things, what was the status of this property?
The status was as it is shown here. In other words, it received no change. It was in the original proposal you all looked at, and you had a two hearing, a two-session hearing on the bulk of those changes. And in the second one, the reason I'm so well informed is I watched all of you on the web this afternoon. It was an hour plus, and as a matter of fact, this, the consideration, it was before you to make this all industrial. You decided that after you got to the Hardig right-of-way, which you fixed, everything south of that was to stay status quo. That was your decision. So, it currently is what it was before then.
Okay.
With no change.
So, we're not, I guess what I'm trying to decide here is we're not, we're not doing anything more than making the front industrial is what you're asking.
That's correct. There is, that's all that's being done.
Okay.
It's to permit access to the parcel. That's all that's being asked of this board.
No, I think you're asking it to be, the property to be made industrial.
Yes, all of it industrial, one zone.
But that's more than just permitting access.
Well, the two zones, the only effect of the two zones is to deny access to it. That's the only effect. The area is too small to develop for any central village purpose, so it's too small for that. And that's, I wasn't trying to mislead there. I was saying straightforwardly, the only change here is to allow access in the industrial, making it industrial, because I can't use it for any Central Village District. I don't have enough area in that, in that front, if you will, tenth of the lot to make any use of it whatsoever. That's why I said that.
Anybody else want?
Why can't they have access to my property? There's enough traffic in Hardig already on that road.
Well, you've got railroad tracks there. Don't you? Don't you have railroad tracks?
They have no access for me.
Yeah, they don't own it.
If you own some property, you'd have the parcels, probably railroad tracks.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing...
Oh, yeah, well, yeah.
It's here. We don't, we have no access.
Yeah. Yeah.
I want to make requests in connection, can I do it now or can I do it later?
Pertaining to this?
Yeah.
Change of zoning, yes.
Okay. So, I am, my property is neighboring that section to be approved for industrial use. I have lived and bought the house...
Should we move that microphone up to him?
On North Main Street, 7th Street, and I have lived here for 40 years. I was 50, now I am 90, so I know the area quite well. Number one, my request number one, the area has not been surveyed during all the 40 years, and from the previous owner, I know that it hasn't been surveyed for further, so it could have been left without surveying about 70 years. So, my first demand would be that the present owner, Mr. Pervier, my good neighbor for a number of years, requests a surveyor to point out exactly where the line is dividing between my property and his. Now, the second request is this. I had, some years back, there was no fence between my property and the school, which is to the south of it, right? And when they developed the sporting fields, I had students, the high school students and others coming into the woods, smoking, throwing away butts, cigarette butts, and I was concerned that it could cause fire. Now, eventually, the school board agreed and put up a fence eight foot to, along the whole property, with about three gates open in the fence, for which I have a key and also the chief janitor of the school, so if any of us want to go because of branches which may fall, I don't know what, so there is access. So, I would insist, if it is for industrial use, people could be walking, there could be far more traffic. There was practically never any traffic while it was private, you know, part of the property of Mr. Pervier, to put up a fence along the lines. Finally, and the third request would be, if its extension or could be converted either into construction site or parking lot, it would, it would make sense to plant some bushes along the fence so that the fumes and noise and whatever else doesn't go as much into the woods. I intend the woods to leave there for the rest of my life as they are. It's a nice section for the community to be in. And there is one thing which could simplify the scene, if it is feasible. If we agreed with Mr. Pervier where the line is for the fence, which I believe is along the brook that is running during winter and dries out during summer, then there would be no need for a survey. Number two, the planting of bushes could be avoided if the fence was, as I have seen along some of the roads, to prevent noise and fumes into habitable areas, a kind of, I don't know whether it's wooden or plastic, but fence of similar type instead of wires.
Okay.
With the gates also. Now, that would eliminate number one and number six.
All right. So that's, thank you.
That's my...
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
My name is Charles Mark, by the way.
And you're at the property just south of where we're talking about? You're at the property just south? You're just closer to town, the property just closer to town from Pervier?
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. Did I see a handoff?
Yeah, let me take it out to the sign.
All right. Do we want to have some planning board, if we're still in the public hearing discussion before deliberating?
I just, did anybody else want to speak?
Yes.
I just want to point out, in the infinite wisdom of the Deerfield Planning Board and the original inaction of the zoning in the town of Deerfield, this was a mistake that happened in 1966. They kept the commercials 300 feet back from North Main Street, to my knowledge, and I don't think anybody who was involved at the time really ever thought about it. You couldn't get from one to the other, but much, the zoning is much more technical than it was back in 1966.
Do you want to, by the way, introduce yourself?
Oh, my name is Bob Decker.
And did, well, you had something to do with the zoning or the planning board years ago?
Yes, I did. But I was not on the, I was not on the planning board in 1966, because I was only about 20 years old. So you can't blame me. You had to be 21 to vote then. But what I'm trying to say is, this is a problem that's been there since the beginning. We got the rest of the problem straightened out back in the spring, and this was, you know, held off and what have you, and now it's back before you. But what I'm trying to say is, this is a problem that's, you know, these people didn't bring it about. I mean, neither Mr. Mark nor Jack and Joyce brought it about. It's just the way it happened in 1966 that goes back to the people who were on the planning way back. I support a change.
Thank you.
I have another question. Actually, I guess this is probably more for you guys. So, what about the alternative of actually, sorry? Oh, sorry. What about the alternative of, instead of zoning it industrial, you know, since the concern here is that it's split between two different types? Instead of making the front part industrial, you make the back part residential? And so I know that you had said something about not being usable as a residential lot? Just wondering if that is actually the case? So is this actually a feasible alternative instead of an industrial?
Can you give Mr. Dupendorf a chance to...
Yeah, you might want to respond tonight.
Mr. Chairman, just to allay Mr. Mark's concern, this parcel was surveyed in 1985. I brought a small copy of it, so we'll be able to identify the lot lines, and that's a, so that'll help that process.
Yeah.
Second thing I wanted to say is, the concern is for spot zoning. When you take one lot and you, and you make it, and you have two contiguous lots to it that flank it on each side for the bulk of its boundary, it is spot zoning, and that exposes both the landowner to the uncertainty of the outcome as well as the town, and that's the concern. It's a spot zoning concern. So, the fact of the matter is, this has been industrial, both a stretch of it to the north and another parcel to the south. Pulling it out now raises that specific concern.
So, the question, probably the south, would it be Mr. Mark's?
No, there's a parcel to the back here. This parcel here, number 23, I believe this is Mr. Mark's property.
He owns the front and the back.
In the front.
He owns both.
Oh, he does own both, okay. So is this...
It's Charles Mark.
Okay. But this parcel is, this parcel is the one I was talking about, the industrial parcel to the south.
It's the one to the south of it, not behind it, that would be the west. I think I can clarify what...
No, let's just, no, just...
Roger.
Do another question?
What happened there is I see you had owned this property.
Yeah, I know.
And he wanted Frontier to buy the back part. So when he sold the front part off, and I don't know if it was this gentleman that bought it at the time, but when he sold the front off, he held the other back and kept a right-of-way through it, and he wanted Frontier to buy it. I couldn't convince the board to buy it, so Mr. Mark owns it today. And, but there's two different parcels there. One has a right-of-way, the back one has a right-of-way, and I'm not sure if, are they both zoned commercial or just one?
It's that way.
Okay.
Right.
I would think the front one is a bit more...
Actually zoned industrial rather than C1 or C2.
Not commercial.
But, but the point is, you, your board and your infinite wisdom could hold another public hearing and ask Mr. Mark's whether or not he objected to putting it forward to rezone his Center Village and the other property of the Center Village as an alternative to the industrial that Jack and Joyce want, and let it go to town meeting with two different things, and, but at least make it consistent zoning.
Can I just clarify? Pat, do you have the latest, the one after our last rezoning?
Thank you for all that.
Is that the April 29th? Yeah, all right.
This is the April 29th.
So I just want to make clear, Pat Smith is our technical assistance person from the Franklin Regional Council of Governments and helped us with the previous rezoning.
So this was the one that was approved at town meeting?
And so we're...
So we're looking at 151-1.
151, this is the one that we're talking about.
So that is split. I also brought for you the map you had looked at prior to that, so you can see the changes that we made.
Right.
So you can see that originally you had contemplated making changes to make these industrial down the wall here, and that after...
And we ended up not doing it.
As correctly described by Attorney Dupendorf in your deliberations following public comment, it was determined to allow only this access piece for Pelican to be changed and to eliminate all those other things down there.
Because of public comment at the time.
Yeah, because of the public comment at the time. 158, 23, these are the two properties here, they're owned by Mr. Mark, and his back lot is industrial and his front lot is CVRD, so he suffers, in fact, that same...
Similar, same thing.
Doesn't suffer, that's the way it is.
Well, yeah, but he can't use that as industrial because he can't get access over CVRD.
And so I guess I'm a little confused, Attorney Dupendorf, that you're saying, so that whole section is all industrial, so it's contiguous, the industrial. So we're not, I'm not sure by making this industrial, what's better about that? Well, you're saying it brings it all together, but it's all, right now it's all RA and this is industrial.
Yeah, my point is that if you were to make, I was responding to a different question, which was, were you making this parcel alone Central Village? That's all. That was the spot zoning concern.
Right, and we didn't, we didn't do that.
That's right, you didn't do that, but that was a suggestion here, and I was responding to it. What we're doing here is simply eliminating or hoping to eliminate the barrier to access such as it was achieved for the Hardig piece.
So if we create that front little access piece, if you turn that into industrial, wouldn't that be spot zoning? Also because on either side now is residential.
No, the logic of that is the continuity and the need for access. You've got a legal logic for it that you wouldn't otherwise have because it sticks out like a sore thumb. So, that's the, and that's why this fix here that you made last year was appropriate.
You changed it.
You know, that you made it that way.
Well, you did see that this is what was contemplated, and after, after public hearings and discussion, the town decided not to...
We're not, I'm not disputing the need for rethinking that, and by the way, it didn't create an access problem. The other changes you made didn't create an access problem. It's just for this parcel, this is the one that created the access problem. See, and I don't disagree with the changes that you made here because the, this already has, already had the access, they had the access problem.
We created an access problem.
But what I'm saying is...
Our action created an access problem.
No, it didn't.
Was it existent?
No, this was all RA. We were contemplating making it industrial, and then we decided not to after public hearings.
Because there was no proponents at that time to make it.
There was actually opponents.
So, I mean, we're revisiting something that we've already discussed.
Right, that's what I wanted to make.
Mr. Decker made clear that this was an issue that was created in 66, according to Mr. Decker, so, yeah, no, you didn't create it.
Why don't you put it forward when we...
I wasn't, issue created in 66.
Engaged by them.
I wasn't asked to...
But I'm saying the property owner didn't come forward at the time.
They came to the first one, didn't come to the second one.
Did come, okay.
There was some confusion about what it meant. I'll be frank with you, I think there was simply some confusion about what it meant.
Because every time the town does a zoning change, it costs the taxpayers thousands of dollars when this could have been taken care of in the springtime if...
I understand that, and I apologize to the board, I wasn't engaged at that time, and I apologize to the board. I don't, I do know this, that the parcel as unusable for industrial purposes now is taxed at a rate that reflects excess, in my opinion. And so that's all we're trying to do is simply try to resolve the access question.
That's an assessor's issue, too. All right. Any other comments, questions? Because we are, I do need to open another public hearing, but I'm, I want to throw out the, whether we need to continue this one or we could wrap this up. And I hate wrapping up public hearings, because I get in trouble.
Well, wrapping it up, John, would mean that it would go to a town meeting.
Well, no, then we would deliberate, we would make a recommendation to town meeting. That's what we're, that's all we have to do.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so, that result would be that it would go to the town meeting or not if we're, however, but I think it would have to go at this point. So we don't have a choice to not send it, do we?
Good question. Pat, you, there's been a lot of emails about this, I didn't follow them all, so...
It is, whether or not an item goes on to the town meeting warrant is a decision by the Board of Selectmen. You guys make a recommendation to town meeting, positive or negative, has an impact on when an item could be brought back. So for example, if you made a positive recommendation and town meeting voted this down, the proponents would not, would be allowed to bring it back. If you made a positive recommendation, they can bring it back any time for reassessment. If however, you make a negative recommendation and it is voted down, they can't bring it back for another two years. So that's where, where your authority lies. Now, the Board of Selectmen has, they have the discretion as to put it on the town meeting warrant or not. If they decide not to put it on, it can be brought forward by citizen petition. For a special town meeting, that requires 100 signatures of registered voters as compared to the 10 signatures that are required for the annual town meeting. So that's a, you know, that's a higher barrier there in terms of getting that on the warrant.
Thank you, that's helpful. So, it still gets back to my question.
Yeah, too close.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, so, public, no one else has comments on this, so we could certainly say that we're going to stop taking public comment. Can we hear from the board quickly?
Did we check with Fire, Police, Health, Building Safety? Do we check with our other boards? Do we need to for spot zoning? We've been, that's what we've been doing, so...
Probably we're calling this spot zoning for any zoning change.
Tiny, yeah. I mean, we went through this whole process, so that would have all, so I feel like we would need to revisit that discussion.
Yeah, I'm trying to think back if there was any concerns before, and I don't remember any, anybody coming forth with a concern.
Yeah, we don't have anything on this from anybody at the town.
Sir, I believe the original proposal...
Chair, I believe the original proposal, the March map you have there, both Concom, the ZDA chair, I think, I watched your hearings, Sam, you know, the ZDA chair and the police chief commented. And there were, and, and that was part of your deliberations last year, it was on the entirety of the proposal. I think the Concom was neutral, sorry, I don't remember, and they, and they commented on the entirety. The ZDA did not have the support, I think only the chair.
Just the chair was there.
Yeah, I think I remember that.
I think what makes sense is for, for our board to revisit the discussions and the information, which we need time to do. If we could close the public hearing but keep the hearing open.
But then no new information, if any new information, then you have to have it on a public hearing, I think, so we can't really bring new information.
Can we keep this, can we vote to keep this open?
Well, I, I, you know, my, my feeling is that, at this, at this point here, if, if, if the proponents, do they want to keep it open for any reason? If not, I'd say close it, and then we'll decide how we, how we vote and let the selectmen select what happens. I, I don't think we, if we don't have any more discussion, I don't, unless, unless they would like us to keep it open for their purposes, I'd, I'd close it myself.
We have a concern, we would very much like to make the upcoming, like, town meeting, that's what we discussed with the, the selectman earlier this summer, town manager, so if we could, we'd love to take you back on that.
Alright, so in which case then, we would basically have to wrap it up tonight and make our recommendations.
I'd be in favor of doing that.
Alright, so do we, anybody have anything to say during the public hearing?
We can still deliberate, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless, Pat, do you have anything else?
I think we pretty much discussed all of this back when we did it, and, and it was just a matter of, of which way it went on public opinion at our open meetings.
Alright, then, here we no more public comments, I'd like to close the public hearing for the purveyor zoning change request on North Main Street. Thank you for everybody. And now, being after seven-thirty, I'd like to open the other public hearing, and then we can come back and deliberate this when we, when we can. And I know that's not the perfect timing for you, but that's.
I think that might be helpful.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I like the, the title.
I know.
I hope it's in bigger print somewhere here, is it? The public, the public, here it is.
The sign sheet going there?
Yes.
It's right here.
Let's finish signing this one, and then I got to send the second one. Did you guys sign?
I did.
I signed, and did, did you sign, John?
Go ahead, take it, I've got it.
I, I didn't sign yet. So, I'd like to now read the public hearing notice for the second public hearing of the evening. The Town of Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty-eight, the Zoning Act, Section five, on October seventh, two thousand thirteen, at seven-thirty PM in the Deerfield Town Hall, A Conway Street, Deerfield, Mass. The purpose of this public hearing is to review a proposed zoning bylaw revision to regulate medical marijuana treatment centers that may be established in the Town of Deerfield under Mass Department of Health regulations for the implementation of the Act for the Humanitarian Medical Use of Marijuana, which is of course one oh-five CMR seven twenty-five. Proposed changes include amendments to the following sections of Chapter one seventy-nine zoning of the Deerfield bylaws. Article two, Section twenty-two hundred, use regulations, to identify the districts where different types of medical marijuana treatment centers will be allowed with a special permit, and those districts where they will not be allowed. Two, Article six definitions, to insert new definitions relating to medical marijuana treatment facilities. And three is Article two, Section twenty-three hundred, dimensional requirements to establish appropriate setbacks for medical marijuana treatment centers from abutting properties and from locations where children commonly congregate. The proposed zoning bylaw revisions are on file with the town clerk at the Deerfield Town Hall and are available for inspection during the regular business hours of the town clerk and can be found on our website. So, that's the public hearing notice, and it was done publicly, it was put in newspapers and all the other official places it's supposed to be put. So, having read that, I just want to clarify that the zoning board has, I mean, the planning board, we have discussed this issue over the past couple meetings, and there is now some proposed new zoning bylaws for medical marijuana treatment centers. Do we have, do we have copies for the? Is there, is there more in there? Sometimes we get a lot of them already made. I don't see them. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I guess all of these, this is the same thing.
Chairman, there's a blank version, and there's a version that is being annotated by town council, which was to be entered into the record today.
Here, call, technical assistance person.
Technically, this is the one.
Oh, okay.
The regular, the regular version was what was available to the public first.
Yeah.
Okay. How about for the board? Why don't we make copy of the one with council for the board?
Did you, did you sign the?
She's going to make.
Did you sign the first meeting sheet there, John?
But, John, if we did ones with council for the board.
Pat, are you making both her?
You got both?
I made town council ones for the board and regular.
You got both, okay.
Yeah, she's got both.
Okay.
So, am I supposed to say both of these, sorry? You take a note, Sam?
Rachel's sort of taking it.
So, where we left it, if I can just give a quick summary, and then we can jump into it, is that the state of Massachusetts back in November voted to allow medical marijuana treatment centers, and there's a lot of, there's a forty-page regulation about it, and it talks about how it can be up to five per county, and lots of security issues along with it and things like that. What it didn't talk about, the Mass laws didn't talk about any of the zoning implications of it. So, apparently now towns are all being left to come up with that themselves. So, the zoning board has got together a couple times, the planning board.
We are.
Planning board, it's got together, and we wanted to look out for the best interest of the Town of Deerfield, which is what we're supposed to do, so we proposed, we proposed some adding specific use to our use table. Every, every business should be in our use table, and then it, it shows where that business can be located in town. There's nothing in our zoning bylaws that says anything about medical marijuana treatment centers. So, we wanted to add that use, and then we wanted to determine where it should go. So, we added that use in there, and then we proposed that it, that they should, wherever it would go, it would require a special permit. And the one that we've proposed in front of us right now is that they would not be allowed anywhere except for industrial zones and planned industrial zones, and even within those zones, it would be special permit, otherwise they're, they're not allowed anywhere. So, that's where we stand. There is also the possibility that cultivation of medical marijuana and dispensary could be different sites, or they could be the same site. And, so that's the understanding, and they, they could then, in fact, have different, they could in fact be located in different zones. But right now, we've lumped them all together and just said the only place any cultivation or treatment can be is, or dispensary is in the planned industrial or the industrial. So, we'd love to hear from people in the Town of Deerfield. A lot of towns are going through this. We want to start with our building inspector, a select person, anybody.
Here, Pat. I didn't look at the last, the last overlay.
I think she's copying it now.
No, overlay, no, all she's copying is this, we don't, you mean the map?
The only concern about the industrial district, if you include it all, that would eliminate, you know, you have to eliminate the ones that are distant from the school, in places where kids congregate. So, that, you can't override.
Turn that mic around, I think they're trying to turn you up.
Yeah.
Yeah, or you could stand at the mic and then.
You can't, you can't override the, by doing it in the industrial zone, you can't override the forty-two pages that got written in the DPH. So, you've got to, either you got to draw circles around it or something to that effect. Somehow, you've got to keep the distances off, because all, all areas aren't going to be compatible.
So, we need to put that in our zone?
And I'll, I'll give you an example. There's a daycare over by the industrial park that would be, that would fall within that radius. There's a daycare over by the planned industrial. So, you're, you're going to be, you know, you really needed to do a little more research on that, or the statement in your bylaw that you have to maintain the distances.
So, if we tag it into the bylaw?
You got to tie that in.
Have to.
Yeah, you got to, you got to do the radius circles from, and then.
Which in fact, I, I didn't read that, but that is part of the, that is in the setbacks, right?
Well, there's another issue that's going to crop up. If somebody wants to put in a new daycare, you know, after the dispensary is there.
Who goes?
Now, what happens?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That'd be more of a problem, I would think, Dick. If, if you included all industrial spots, you'd have to meet the state's criteria.
Exactly.
It automatically would kick you out of that area, so I don't think we really need to pinpoint it. The state regulations are going to kick you out.
And I think we need a little clarification from legal counsel about the fact if a daycare educational facility comes in, does that mean you close the dispensary? Or does that mean you can move in with the distances? I don't know that answer.
Or that you can't move and put a daycare there, that might be.
DPH doesn't know that answer either.
I know.
So, we need a legal opinion on that, just the distances, we, you know. What you're doing is absolutely right, it's just, we have a couple situations that could crop up with, you know, with somebody moving in and out. That's it.
Thank you.
Pat said something about legal counsel's opinions, where does that play into here?
You'll see they're done in track changes, she added a couple of items addressing some additional definitions, and then doing, you know, on the use table to insert that, those same terminologies there.
Okay, is this the stuff on page seven?
Well, that talks about the setbacks.
You see, it's, it's, it's new information added in italates and underlines.
Okay.
John, if I ask a simple question, is the railroad yard the only place this will go?
Well, we have several industrials.
Yeah, but most of them are located close to the school or close to a daycare. So, unless there's a daycare out by the, in East Deerfield by the railroad, that's probably the only spot that's on industrial that you can go.
It's not, it's a C two now.
It's a C two.
It's C two.
Used to be industrial.
Yeah, well, that got fixed a while ago. So, can't go there, thanks.
So, I, I mean, that's all good information, I'm not sure it's exactly, is that something we need to?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Talk about tonight, I guess, yeah.
It's just something that came up recently.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, if, if there was a dispensary or one of these medical marijuana facilities, wouldn't it be then the daycare could not move in that area? And you can't have, if it's zoned for a certain thing, somebody moves, how could you require?
You're denying the right, I mean, they have the right to use that property for a daycare, but you're saying they can't because there's one that already exists.
Right.
And then, you can go to the, like Dick said, if you had daycare, and then all of a sudden it closes, now that would open it, open it up, so I don't know, it's, like, probably illegal.
Probably is.
Yeah.
But again, that's not, we're not going to have the answer tonight, but it's a question, it's a question to keep in mind.
It's a good question.
So, I know the select board has discussed this, I'm, I'm hoping Carolyn might want to share anything that.
We haven't really come to a consensus per se, but, because we've been still, I mean, we're still concerned about a lot of issues that DPH hasn't addressed. But I was hoping that you would limit the dispensaries, where the location of the dispensaries was, the industrial park, in the first section of the industrial land, as you come up five and ten? Because that is, you know, that's really, I think, our major concern at the moment, because, you know, you have public in and out and transferred congregation. It, the cultiv- cultivation in itself, I think, is, you know, whoever does have a permit to cultivate should, should be able to do it, be wearing our agricultural areas, because it will be secure. Our police will have one person to deal with, and either it's secure, it's not secure, and if it's not secure, it's shut down. You know, the guidelines are pretty strict for the cultivation part. So, and that's not really, you know, it's not really a worry at this point. My concern is dispensary issues, so I would like the planning board to, you know, based on the meeting that Dick and I went to, I think that's where most of our problems are going to be. And I, I think that has most issues with our children in town, and, and, you know, the quality of life of our community potentially is at risk. So, I would like, you know, the dispensaries to be located in a place where cars can go in and out, not a lot of sidewalks, not a lot of potential people to hang out. And, you know, based on the experience of other states, you know, it's not going to be that hard to get these certifications. And it looks like, again, based on some of the research that I've done and readings, that about five percent of the actual certifications are people with, like, cancer or glaucoma or HIV. It's a lot of severe and suffering stuff, and that's where some of these issues come, and our enforcement issues come, because a lot of certifications are allowed to last, and you wouldn't know that unless you were, you know, somebody gets in trouble and stuff like that. So, what I'm saying is it would be really nice if these dispensaries were located in places where the police could oversee this, and there's a lot of supervision, but minimal impact on our community, you know, negative impact, you know. Otherwise, I don't really have any problem, I think there's going to be supervision, there's going to be a lot of issues when we roll this out. We as a town have really got to be careful and make sure that we cover our costs, it's going to cost us. You know, every time a plant has gone missing, there's going to be an investigation. So, there's going to be a lot of interesting things coming out with this, and DPH hasn't defined a lot of the issues and our questions, we're not answering. They're nonprofits, so we have to figure out some way to generate revenue. So, that, but, but I'm not against this, so what I would say is we just have to be careful. So, by limiting the dispensaries to locations that potentially are going to grow, you know, and say, an example would be the dis and, you know, facility is big enough to grow, and you have a co-located dispensary there, or, you know, Deerfield Plastics or someplace like that. Some of our empty buildings that are already existing makes sense. So, that's where, you know, we were thinking the, the industrial part, or, you know, in that first section outside.
So, what I'm hearing is that the, and, and to remind people, a special permit still means then they would have to come, anybody who wants to do this would have to come before the zoning board and be very specific, and the zoning board can ask all kinds of questions about how, how it's going to unfold. And so, that's kind of the second, or another level of town involvement with anybody doing this. But a special permit in an industrial zone sounds like it could be the way to go.
Yeah, not all industrials, but, you know, you get more into town, you get further up, it's further away from our police station.
Well, then, we do need that new zoning map, because where is our industrial? Because now the East Deerfield Railroad Yard, is, is it all commercial, two?
Well, I think it's all C two.
That's C two up there. Oh, that's C two, okay.
So, I think the only industrial are five and ten and, and then the industrial park.
Okay.
And the industrial park has a, has another layer, because it's also, isn't that, Dedrick has some.
Industrial, there's plant industrial.
There's plant industrial, and then Dedrick does, has some oversight in that area as well.
You know how we limited the red light district?
I remember.
We had to do the red light district, I was hoping that we could do a similar thing, just limit dispensary part.
But I guess is that different than just, if, if, if we just have this, we only have so much industrial, so we just said industrial?
Let's bring it down so we have an current, because I, you know.
And then the other, the other part I heard you say was that cultivation in, in agricultural. And then the other, the other part I heard you say was that cultivation in an agricultural area by special permit could be a option also.
Yeah.
Anybody else says we're, as we're looking at the map, any other comments?
This is just medical marijuana. We're not talking about when marijuana gets legalized.
These Massachusetts voters voted for the medical marijuana.
Step one, my friend. Okay?
We take them one step at a time. Unless you know something else.
Well, you're gonna be able to vote if you go to the casino, right? Well, that's a thing about ten years ago.
See, I wasn't really interested in that. This is twenty.
Wanna come say something? You wanna wait, wait for a question? I thought there might be a question.
I was thinking this little parcel here.
Yep.
The industrial part. Not the big, just wait.
That's up and down five and ten, then you get into.
Yeah, no. I was thinking that area here. This is, this is too close from here. There's just a lot of stuff.
Five hundred from schools?
If it's.
Five hundred.
Oh, it's five hundred.
Unless we, unless we impose more.
Oh, I thought someone said thousand.
Oh, it's five hundred.
The, the regulations that the DPH say in the absence of local zoning, the five hundred will be standard. So if you have zoning, I think you're in a position to do it for less.
Some, some towns are thinking less because otherwise, because like you said, it couldn't make it, so you can't do it anywhere.
Yeah, right. We have the attorney in the room.
Let's have a kiosk at the end of driveway.
But I was thinking if we did the industrial park, we did this part.
Plant industrial and then, and then the southern.
Yeah, but the industrial park has a daycare, I believe, across the street, doesn't it?
But the industrial park's the largest piece of property. It may be across the street.
So you have setback. But if we just did those two for dispensary, I'm not talking about cultivation, but dispensary. That would limit traffic and, and issues. Our police would have better focus area to get to.
So they could come to town and they could go to Dunkin' Donuts, go across the street, get new stuff, and it'd be all set.
Get right back on ninety-one and leave.
Cultivation can go on time too.
Yes, the national law of security, you don't, they're, they're.
Well, the local has security, Carolyn. I don't think you're gonna do the door open.
No, we're talking about public.
Let's go back up.
What it is is public. There's no public in the whole region.
So I'm, I'm curious if there's any questions in particular about safety or whatnot. We have our police chief here who would be happy to address that.
I have a question, John.
Yes.
I'm trying to change the definition in the table. It says medical and dental centers. And to put a definition that it does not include medical marijuana in that definition because somebody's gonna say that it adds a medical center. And you're allowing that as a special permit, the C one and the C two.
Where are?
Where are you now?
This use.
Medical and dental. Right.
The council defined.
So what you need to do is you need to put a footnote to that and define does not include anything licensed under the medical marijuana law.
Bob, that's a very good catch. I, that's true.
And the council did recommend that to us.
They did, the council did define though what medical.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is.
Yeah, so that people can't construe.
Dental centers.
Right.
I mean, it's medical marijuana.
But now with a, with a new use, a new principle use called medical marijuana treatment center, it's very clear that, that's what that's for.
I'm just saying.
You could exempt it in the language.
So we should put. The footnote it out of there.
Right.
So you put in parentheses or something, not, not including.
Right. That would say it's a lawsuit.
Okay.
Why bother? Just, just do it.
Any other comments?
I have a question about security.
Yep.
Be police trained professionals or would be, like Roy McCall, who passed out, arrowhead security at these facilities?
The DPH has not addressed that. They, they have not defined what the training will be for security officers.
So it could be a regular security guard or it could be a police officer. So you go from the bare base to nothing or too professional?
We had a lot of questions. I mean, I went to the meeting fairly confident that this was gonna be pretty straightforward. By the time Dick and I came out, we were flabbergasted that they hadn't really addressed anything on how, how it's gonna go out locally at all.
Well, I mean, in the things, it doesn't talk about that there has to be a police officer at the place.
No, but it's like training, like they said, training, they're gonna require, our concern was who's gonna be, you know, working on dispensaries. Because we have, as you know, problems against Board of Health trying to enforce tobacco laws in town. And so who are, who are you talking minimum wage person? And they said, oh, no, they're gonna be training and there's, you know, they'll be dispensing medical information as they hand out medical marijuana. This is great. So what kind of training? Well, they had no idea what the training was gonna be at that point. And in my mind, immediately I flashed, okay, it's gonna be some minimum wage person that's gonna hand out information on a, this piece of paper says marijuana is bad for your health and it's gonna be littering our streets and it'll have no impact. So my concern with DPH is that, or my question to DPH just with Dick's is, you know, you want this to be food safe. Who's gonna, who's gonna make sure that these people are food safe certified? Who's gonna make sure they have some kind of medical training? And that the medical advice that they're giving out is appropriate and is gonna be at least listened to. So anyway, they had no answers for that. And that's why I went from being, okay, this is gonna work, to we really need to shrink this down to a very manageable area that we can police properly ourselves. And that we know, I mean, it's relatively close to town hall. So, you know, Dick's going down there on a regular basis. And we need, you know, be fairly close and it's gonna be part of our regular patrols and, and we're gonna be checking up on it. And it, so it needs to be contained.
She's a pediatrician.
So that's, thank you, because I, when you read the regs, I mean, it does talk about, like you say, the train, everybody's gonna be trained at the dispensary.
No, but when you ask them these questions about specifics, they had no answers. They have no answers on, you know, how many hardship cases. This is why I wanna make sure we do get a dispensary in the town because otherwise they'll be issuing hardship certifications. And that's gonna be a nightmare to police because, you know, people will be getting opportunities to grow their own. That has no security. That has no police. They have no definition.
And that's never happened before, so.
You never got caught, John.
I, I just have to say that we're, we're less than pleased with what answers were from the DPH. And there's a lot of questions on how this is gonna work and how it's gonna affect our community. And we're gonna be, stay on top of it to make sure it's positive and that it isn't a negative experience, but it's gonna take a lot of work. So I would feel much more comfortable if it was, you know, the dispensary part, which is the public part, is constrained at least in the beginning. If, if it's gonna be not a problem, then we can change it. We can rezone bigger areas. And maybe as this matures, then people can see what they want or don't want and it will change. But for now, in the beginning, I would feel very much more comfortable if our dispensaries were limited.
For what? I didn't hear.
Limited, limited in location.
Just the plant industrial and the lower industrial part.
Yeah, just so that we are able to keep an eye on them very closely.
And, and I, I think it's also important, I think this is partly where you may be coming from, correct me if I'm wrong, but you, you can't just outlaw this stuff.
Oh, no, no, no.
So that's why by allowing it in certain restricted areas is a good proactive way to go forward in, in a place that the town feels is, you know, manageable.
Right. That's why I don't really, you know, doing the moratorium because it just doesn't make sense.
Exactly.
Let's just deal with it. Let's try to roll it out. Let's roll it out as fast as we can and see how, you know, we can try to manage it the best way we can that's not at a cost to the town.
We can always grow it down the road if necessary. If everything, what we're being told works out, it'll be virtually impossible to retract. Therefore, we need to implement the precautionary principle in dealing with this.
And, you know, we've gotta get a handle on what is gonna cost us. I mean, we already are having a hard time covering our, our services already and, you know, adding this in is gonna be tough.
I was curious about they, they're supposed to be nonprofits, but it doesn't mean they are exempt from taxes, does it?
That means they are non-taxable. So we have to figure out some way to collect revenue. So we're working on it, John. Don't worry. But there was no conversation with EOR on this and it's like, okay, so how do we justify our permits? I mean, what immediately comes to mind for me is resource officer and, you know, detective, part-time detective time because, like I said, every time a plant goes missing, we're gonna have that investigated and documented and followed up on. So, you know.
So that becomes part of the special permit negoti.
That's part of the cost of the special permit. Right. And, and it's gotta, we, we've gotta document what it's gonna cost us so it doesn't burden us as a town. Because we, like I said, we have, we're acting hard to find one.
Isla.
I have a technical question for Pat. So we only do part of the industrial zone? Do we have to do like an overlay?
Yes.
Okay, so what do you?
I would feel comfortable with it, just like we did for the, the, you know, sonography stuff. We, you know, we located a specific area. We couldn't, we couldn't not allow it. But we located it in the area that would have minimal impact on the community and son of a gun, nobody wanted to build one there. So it worked out.
Yes, sir.
That's good.
Wow, I thought we had more public comment. All right.
Is there, what are the concerns from the, from your perspective? What do you see? Cost concerns, traffic concerns?
Starts with the security measures that are put into place. The DPH has come out with certain restrictions on it already that they have to have a camera system in place, has to report for a certain amount of time. But some of my concerns, obviously, who's working there, what the security rights of access are, additional patrols required to go around there, whether somebody could have access to the facility or not, the ease in, in, off of ninety-one to get to it, get right back off of ninety-one in any robbery case, all the way through to additional medical calls. Because some of the people that are gonna be going there have debilitating conditions and there's going to be problems in the parking lot where your medical calls may go up, five, ten, twenty calls a year in general because of this. I think Carolyn addressed it pretty well, where any plant that goes missing, any seed that goes missing is a problem for us. And I don't know how to put a number on that problem. And that's hard for me because this is a new adventure for all of us. How do you put a number on tracking down a seed that goes missing or a pot plant that goes missing? You start an investigation and before you know it, you're ten, twenty, thirty hours deep into this thing. And Boston needs a report that's written right into the law, that the local police department has to be notified of any discrepancy. We have to fully investigate it, supply Boston with a report. So it becomes very costly to us of how to deal with this. And I don't know what the right answer is upfront. And I think that's some of my apprehension.
That's why, you know, like I said, reducing the area into an overlay district would be really a good way for us to start and then see what happens.
Just the definition of your overlay, where you're gonna have it, Carolyn?
Yes, the plant industrial park.
Just the.
And the first strip.
The first strip from, from the town line to Elm Street.
Yeah.
This one?
Yeah, that little purple one, right there.
No, not all the way to Elm Street. I, I don't think she's talking.
I don't think it goes all the way.
Well, I just looked at the map over there. You go take a look. I, I.
No, that industrial park, that industrial area, I think, does that go to crop production or does that end at the old Deerfield Plastics?
Well, go look at the map and it looks like it goes right to Elm Street, but it doesn't take all of Jack's property.
No, that corner lot, remember we were talking about putting a restaurant there years ago? I think it was a C. I think it's in a commercial, not a, not.
The cornfield.
But that's just the, that was.
So, um.
Well, we could, then, yes, then we, maybe the overlay district cannot.
Cannot include that.
Cannot.
So I just wanna follow up with the chief, what, cultivation? Are you separating the two? Dispensary being different than cultivation as far as some of your, your issues?
Do I separate out the two? No.
Every time you move it, there's a risk for abuse. Every time it touches someone.
The intent of combining.
I would think agricultural fields would be harder to monitor.
No, it has to be in a closed space. It has to be enclosed.
In a building.
But what the chief is saying, he, he's still gonna have the same concerns from a security point of view, but you're dealing with whoever the grower is and that's it.
Yeah.
So it's, you're, it's not the same, I mean, in the sense that, you know, either you're, you're secure or you're not, you're shut down, you know. And it's in a closed space. It's not like people are driving by fields that are open.
I mean, I get, I mean, your missing plant example was, that's any more cultivation than a dispensary.
That's the same. So we want a special permit for the cultivation as well. Because the cultivation is gonna cost, I mean, whether the missing plant is in the growing or at the dispensary, you're still gonna have the missing issues. I mean, it's still gonna cost us.
Good. Anything else?
That brings up another question. Is, is the growing of marijuana agricultural or agricultural? What is it?
No. It is not considered.
The DPH does not define it as food, but they want it to be to food code, whether you grow it or you're dispensing.
My question is, right, you've got an agricultural use exemption here that goes all the way through. You need to also have a footnote in there that your project is not included. Okay?
If you for growing, unless, if, if.
Okay. Cause, I mean, I would think that they can make an argument that it's agriculture, it's grown. It may not be a food product.
Well, that's.
Tobacco's?
Yeah, tobacco.
That's why we wanna have a special definition in here because we didn't wanna leave it up to chance that someone's gonna argue that it's agricultural and it should be grown.
Like the footnote on the medical and, and the dental facilities, they make sure it didn't include it. And you wanna make sure it doesn't include it under the agricultural one.
That makes so much sense.
Otherwise, somebody's gonna skate through it.
Well, no, what they'll, or it'll cost us money for the lab, so.
So let's put it in there.
Just put it in and the map saves us from even wanting to worry.
We get the both of them and our seats, I'll talk first and then you can fix everything I say wrong. But my reading of the DPH regulations, they, they did address this issue and they did not answer the question. So I think it is still an open question whether this would fall under the agricultural exemption or not. And it could likely be negated to answer that.
But if we put the clause in, it shall not include.
We do that.
That it would take care of it.
Yeah, well, that's why I think, that's why we need to hear from our esteemed lawyer here. What do you think about that?
I just found here, Mr. Chairman, I.
Love to.
You have a, a bylaw provision that speaks to the fact that certain uses could fit in multiple categories. That bylaw provision, I forgot, Pat, do you know which one it was in the, in the base bylaw?
It's twenty-two twenty.
Twenty-two twenty. What it says is if you fit into multiple categories, you, you are only permitted to act under the most restrictive. So for example, if you're a medical dispensary and there's a definition of marijuana dispensary, you won't fit in a broader care category of medical and dental. So I think that language covers the town in that instance. It's a fairly common, it's a fairly common piece in bylaws that particularly like yours, which is a comprehensive bylaw, you wanna define the uses. So I think it is, is that right, twenty-two twenty?
Yes.
That covers, that covers your concern.
A more specific classification shall govern. All right. All right, so again, this is a, this is the public hearing, which we, we have to have to change anything in the bylaws. We do wanna get it to town meeting, which is four weeks from tonight. So I'm kinda leaning towards the closing of the meeting, but I wanna make sure we don't do it preemptively. So does anybody else have anything on the board to discuss?
I'd like to point out that if you allow cultivation in residential agricultural, it's gonna, and someone plays a absorbent amount for a piece of land, it's gonna drive, the assessors are gonna drive the value of agricultural land up in all the town, in everywhere in town. So, you know, people growing products. So, you know, people growing products that don't generate this type of revenue are gonna be even further behind. You know, if you jack the price of, of agricultural land up, um, you have to, you have to, uh, sort of recognize that there's a ripple effect, you know, somebody buys ten acres and the, the assessors have been sort of using that one transaction to apply to all the other land.
That's true, that's true, that's a good opportunity.
That is very good, Max.
My understanding is, is, in any county, you're gonna, the maximum you're gonna have is five of these, I guess. And you're talking about, you're talking about a lot of land, you're probably one acre at the most, but-
But there was a transaction, there was a transaction that went on, you know, a couple of years ago, and someone wanted a particular piece of land, and he paid a lot more than he probably should've, and assessors grabbed it and ran with it, and ran the price up, the valuation of everybody else's land up.
Again, we don't know what the, we don't know, this is gonna be a profit-making venture, to tell you the truth, so I'm not sure, that's quite a-
It's a side effect, it's a, a side effect of, of-
That's an interesting point. Very, I would suggest, limited, but, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
But, when you're planting corn.
Planting corn or growing marijuana, I absolutely would do.
Should be slightly different, because it has to be in an enclosed facility, does it not?
Right, that's why we-
Should be slightly different.
I think it's compact, yeah.
Do they define in closed facility, like a greenhouse?
It can be indoor or outdoor, it specifically mentions both. But it must be enclosed.
But, but then you look at the security, and then you start saying, it's not, you can't do it outdoors, when you look at all the security, uh-
Yeah. It, it definitely pushes you towards an interior space, but it specifically allows it to be outside in a different way.
Uh, just one more thing, John.
Yep.
You realize that growing and dispensing, growing, like Max is trying to point out, somebody could grow fifty acres and sell it to Boston, doesn't necessarily mean they're only gonna grow one acre for this dispensary, okay? That's a bigger issue for security-wise, and the police department, if we wind up, we could have all the whole deer field growing marijuana. I mean, and then it becomes a real big security problem. You know, the bigger the facility gets, right now, they're talking about thirty thousand square foot facilities, approximately, for both dispensary and growing, and it may be wise to even set some limitations at some point on the amount of acreage that you could use for this purpose.
Well, we can do that right now by, with an overlay, and the grow and the dispensary is on that same problem.
You need to be aware that the two don't necessarily have to be the same person.
Would you wanna be the neighbor dick of the person that had to grow on the ag rez with the risk of home invasion? We don't know what the risks are, that's where the problem is. We don't know what the risks are.
That is correct.
So therefore, we need to proceed, we need to plan, not react, and that's-
We answered the question.
We asked that question.
The D P H, their answer was, talk to that guy over there.
Right, they're just passing the buck. The D P H hasn't, part of the reason they haven't come up with the regulations is they're busy with the crime lab over at U Mass still, at this moment. How did they handle that? Do you think they're gonna do any better with this?
I have a second little question for Pat. Can we do something like what, uh, you know, there's a certain amount of heat from, there, sure, that brought the question about being a residential?
From a residential district? You could do, you did for the agricultural plant, and have a perimeter list, you did for solar as well, you have a larger buffer where it backs up against a residential district. So, so that would be something in, in your dimensional requirements, you could do this.
Dick, just, I wanna go back, I, my understanding was you could only have, uh, you have to be paired up, a cultivator has to be paired up with a dispensary, and you can only have three maximum with the same ownership. So, so I just wanna get back to that, you can't be growing, one, one person can't grow it for all fifty dispensaries.
No, 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 but you, your licenses up to thirty-five, three or four or five of them could only here for licenses from Boston, do dispensaries out there.
Okay.
It doesn't-
But you're not gonna have one grower growing for the whole.
Yeah, that's-
I know that somebody in this room can answer that question, 'cause he's researched it thoroughly, but I don't know if he's willing to stand up and answer it for you.
Well, I mean, I, I read this, and I, I think you did too, and that's, that's what it says, is you can only have, you know, you can only own three of these, right? And you, and you have to be paired up with a dispensary, so you-
The size is not determined.
Right, well, it's determined on the, on the demand, I think, and we don't know what the demand is, so, yeah. Alright, anybody else? So, do we propose to, uh, close the public hearing? If, 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 keep it open, then we can't bring it to the town, so we have to, if we wanna bring this to the town meeting, then we gotta close it.
So, an overlay, you have to floor it.
Yep, Pat.
You're proposing very significant changes?
Yes, we will have to continue this public hearing.
You're going to hold another public hearing that'll have to be fully noticed on your new proposal, okay? So, you have a very short timeframe within which to accomplish that.
So you, so, you can't just continue this if you're gonna make, if you're proposing-
No, because you're, you're gonna come back with a completely different proposal, and we put this question to Town Council early on, when she was reviewing this, because we were concerned about the timeframe, and she's like, for example, if you just added the R A district back in, you'd have to re-notice and have another public hearing, and you're doing something more significant than that. So I think there's no question, but that you, if you wanna proceed, you need to close this hearing, create a new draft, and have a public hearing, and I, I, I did the calculations on the calendar, with fourteen day notice, and not being allowed to hold the hearing on day fourteen, and you know, eight to fifteen, even if we got everything in, and the, and the recorder needs two days' advance notice, so we could get everything fixed tomorrow, and get it in the paper. You couldn't hold your hearing until the twenty-fourth. Given the nature of these changes, even getting it all ready tomorrow is gonna be difficult. And where are you gonna, you know, so, we'd have to sit here tonight and make all the changes, and you vote on that new draft tonight, so that that could happen in that timeframe, the twenty-fourth is a Thursday prior to the Monday town meeting.
So, you still wanted to go to council, the new draft?
Yes.
So we, we don't wanna vote on it tonight till this?
No, I, I think you guys, you can do it. It's no different, this is no different than, than what we did with, you know, the sonography overlay. We had to do that, we did that in six weeks. We changed, and, remember, we started out at the railroad yard, and we moved it around, and we, that was too substantially different, so we had to have another public hearing. And we did it, so if you guys wanna do business, do it.
And then twenty-five?
Yeah, so, um, alright, so then, closing this meeting makes sense. I'd like to, uh-
Closing the public hearing.
I'd like to close the public hearing on the proposed marijuana zoning changes. So now I'd like to ask the board to deliberate and come up with a-
The changes.
The changes. So the changes we heard is to make, to, to don't, I don't know how to do this, so it's an overlay, I forget what an overlay means.
You can't have it on use table anymore.
You can't have it on the use-
So we strip it out of the use table?
And we make a separate-
We make a separate section, which has your specific guidelines in it.
Wow.
And, we have to alter the district I D section to indicate that this is a new overlay district, along with the other couple that you already have.
We, we need to clarify this, is that a mistake?
It's probably a right away, I can double check with our G I S person, there's a lot of, uh-
The gas right away there, that's probably why.
Right, rights of way that, you know, don't have any-
In our overlay district, we just say that it's at the, we just specify the exact property.
Yeah, you can leave that out, yeah, that's easy. The overlay district, you're just leaving that out. To stop the, the, yeah. Because we don't wanna, I mean, that was the whole point.
John, why don't you put the definition of this stuff in the pornographic dis- overlay district? And that district is already established, just put it right there.
No, because-
It's-
Because, essentially, we have empty buildings in town, so, we wanna, we want, you know what, if they're gonna do it, if they wanna do it?
Yeah, I think we put that one on the left.
No, I'm just saying, maybe it's-
I don't want anyone to say anything about our adult entertainment.
Yeah, I don't wanna bring that back up.
Yeah. That is kind of not necessarily a hundred percent.
Under the reader.
So we have to make the overlay, we're taking out of the use table, make an overlay, then we have to modify industrial district too, Pat?
The overlay district would not include any, any property next to the town.
Right, right, you can say we had to modify.
But we'll have to, we'll have to create a map of the overlay district. So it specifically shows, and that would be appended as your adult entertainment overlay district map is. We have to figure out where the dimensional, we may, we change the footnotes to refer to the medical marijuana overlay district, I guess, in the dimensional chart, and you'd need to determine if you wanna do additional, uh, perimeter buffers.
Oh, yeah.
And we're, we're gonna address those other buffers.
Well, going, uh, plant industrial, or that one industrial site that Carolyn suggested, would that be necessary, because?
It's pre-lifting buildings.
It's, you know, you've got railroad tracks, you've got pre-existing buildings, parking lots, highways, farmland.
What, what you're doing is essentially forcing men to pre-exist in buildings, really.
Right.
But they're part of a larger district, so we would have to somehow, that's what the overlay district would do, pull that out.
Right.
So they're only that portion of I would qualify. And over the whole district, it's easy, and then it stays on the table. But that's not, you know, the whole issue, so.
So what, and then, so this is adult, I'm looking at the adult use one, because it's, it's an overlay district, it's two pages, and some of it says that the underlying district continues to apply.
Yes, unless otherwise we're having it-
Except for what you're putting on top of it.
Right.
Right, so you kinda have to, so you don't have to get into parking and all these other zoning issues necessarily?
Correct.
Because they are existing.
Unless you want more stranger or different ones for these, this particular use. I, I wouldn't foresee, I wouldn't foresee that. If, you know, if we have, if there's, if parking seems to be an issue, we will address it.
And that's part of the special permit, actually, you can defend.
That's where, when they, right. And there is, you know, like if you talked about the distant building, that, you know, there's plenty of parking down there, I mean, it's almost all paved.
So if we do overlay, we can still require a special permit, correct? Rather than by, right, overlay with special permit. That should be able to take care of some of our-
Should address all the issues.
Well, you know, eh, we're trying to do the best that we can.
You have the opportunity to address issues. And to do not.
Excuse me?
A permit is a discretionary permit, so, but if, that's, right, going forward, you'll help it to meet the town requirements.
Review.
You'd be in a position to deny me permits.
Right.
But the, wh- where do you say it needs, it requires a special permit? You say that in the-
You'd have to create a new section for special regu- special regulations for medical marijuana, and that, you specify that it can only, they can only, it can only be done by special permit of the Z B A in the overlay district, yes.
But, but you actually write that up on, somewhere, under your use, in your use table, or?
It can't be on the table, because it's not separately identified as a new overlay.
Right, so you only say it in that such, special section?
Right.
Okay.
Does the special permit have to be issued by zoning board?
No, you could specify a different special permitting, permitting granting authority for that if you wished. You are the special permitting granting authority to any or whatever, and you're used to certain solar installations. That was still identified in the bylaw, you are responsible.
What do you guys think on that one?
My main overlay, the Z B A handles the special permit.
I do too.
Yeah, we do, we, the adult, we give it to the zoning board.
I don't know if you feel, if you feel responsible to the select board, because the security-
The select board can also be a special permit granting authority?
You could also see that provision as well. I, I mean, from a security point of view, security would be the biggest issue. So, if you felt comfortable with the select board, I would be fine with that.
To make the select board this?
Yes.
That makes even more sense.
I, I, security is the biggest issue, to keep track of that.
Because they're, may, may-
They're not as familiar with the rest of the zoning, but if you're saying that the rest of the zoning's not as important as the, uh-
They pull in as planning, yeah.
Because, right, security's not usually something that comes up high on our, the zoning.
I feel this issue is more important than any other issue that has come in front of this board ever. The medical marijuana, so, um, because you do have a better pulse on what's going on in town as a select board, I would not be against that.
Well, like I said, I think security's gonna be the hugest issue, and monitoring that on a regular basis, so, um, we could put, having a select board issue, we, we would probably, if you guys felt comfortable, I-
Is that something that would have to be decided tonight, John?
If we're gonna, if we have to write a whole-
Yeah.
-overlay and have that, that, you know, put that out there for a public hearing, then we need to-
Yeah, yeah, then we'd have to put that in there. I just, I think that, in terms of, you know, kind of the will of the people, keeping it in front of everybody, that the select board is really the more transparent-
That's the way I feel too, yeah.
You think more people watch their TV show now?
I have actually received several texts already, just wanna let you know, we have quite a wide-
Are we tweeting?
We're getting, we're getting tweeted.
Oh, really? Well, you should read that.
My, my phone is blowing up.
Well, you should-
I just wanted to know that Red Sox are tied up, but, you know, that's what I'm getting, that's what I'm getting tweets about.
They're, they're winning, are they?
Three-three.
Alright, oh boy. Yeah, this is just such a complex issue, it, it really is, I mean, it's-
It's very serious, I, I was not uncomfortable with it initially, and I have to tell you, um, D P H, this is not a good answer for us for local, you know, rolling this out locally, it was very, um, disconcerting, that they had, you know, addressing these local issues.
Well, I mean, here's just some of the issues that we, we, we're gonna need to contend with. No requirement that doctors are certified in Massachusetts, no definition of a sixty-day supply, no parental consent, consent for use by minors, no tracking of prescriptions, or the number of prescriptions filled by-
I don't know that stuff is defined, that's why-
That's, that's what I'm saying, right now, there are no definitions.
Actually, some of it is, yeah.
It's not a prescription.
It's not a certification.
Okay, let me rephrase, certification versus no expiration date for the certification, no definition of debilitating, debilitating conditions, and that's just to name a couple, it's, it's very vague.
That's right, and, and, you know, I wasn't prepared for that when we went, when Dick and I went to that meeting. We, we wanted to know what, what it was locally we were responsible for, and, and not even to have D P H have any of those definitions, was like, okay, how are we gonna enforce this locally? So, that's why initially I wasn't really concerned, and that's why I'm really stressing this overlay district is the way to go for us now. So we have some control as we roll it out.
Alright, so we're at the point of, of doing, so now we're into writing the overlay district. So, so how do we do that?
You're gonna have to give me as detailed instructions as possible, so that I can draft it tomorrow.
But, I guess, I guess part of that is we need instructions about what do you need to put in, and then, and then we, you know?
Well, you define the area as that lower part of I, plus D I, correct?
So we've got the area.
Do we need to make a proposal, or we need to make a vote?
Well, you need to, let's forget the details, and then you guys take a call to have me clarify that.
Yeah, but that's a-
Vote on, yeah.
And then we vote on it.
To have me clarify that.
So, I mean, I'm just going by this, so you have the purpose and intent, so we can, we have that, do we? Purposes to-
We have definition.
This is where medical marijuana treatment centers can be located.
Yep.
With the intent to, to do the best thing for the town and Deerfield, and, um-
We have a definition. Are we doing an overlay for both production and dispensary?
Are you distinguishing between the different uses anymore, are they all really gonna fall under that same?
Right.
Personally, I would like to see the grow and the dispensary in that overlay, that's my opinion.
And I, and I think that's what the chief was saying too.
Yep.
So that would then, we would just be talking about medical marijuana treatment centers, however they broke out?
Well, I'd, I'd like to have cultivation in the agricultural area. And that's how we started it, a month ago, I thought that was where we, we were gonna put that forward, and then something happened where-
That's the whole R E.
You were the only one who thought that one.
Well, no, I don't believe so.
No, no way.
Yes, Dick?
Well, I'll just give you a little information on that. Ed, multiple inquiries, three really interested people, all three, we had a fourth one too, but he's backed, backed away. All three of the ones that have been proposed so far, and required about it, are going to be self-contained in the same building.
As the.
So they were going to grow and dispense under the same security, the same building.
Basically, we're filling empty buildings, so.
Separating the two doubles up on the police security.
In what zone?
Expenses, right now, just so you know, about the Department of Revenue has had, the Department of Public Health has no contact with the Department of Revenue. There's no determination on what can be taxed, and they are issuing these licenses to nonprofits, which.
They're not taxed.
We don't know at this point how we're going to get our even tax money on property or royalties.
Which, which, that one's very bizarre, how can you take an industrial building off of the tax rolls?
Well, you can have a pilot, you can have a pilot.
Yeah.
But a pilot payment is no guarantee of payment. A pilot payment is a, is, we are saying that we're going to pay you.
But I think in, in, but in a special permit, working out that, you basically can work out an agreement.
That's where the special permit comes.
That's the big condition, a special permit is a guaranteed pilot payment of our expenses. I mean, that's part of.
Because this is going to increase our police budget, just who even knows? Who can even throw a number at it?
No, we don't, actually, we don't have an answer.
What about fire protection?
Did they say why?
The whole neighborhood will be.
Well, either supposed to be, they set them up as nonprofits.
I know, but did they say what the reason behind that?
Well, I think they wanted the idea.
How can you tax?
Not to be a profit base then.
That was my question, how can we get tax revenue?
No, I understand what your concern is, but why did they make it a requirement you had to be a nonprofit?
Because you're not supposed to be making a lot of money.
Oh, I know, but.
Well, you're not supposed to be making a lot of money, it's, it's a one hundred percent cash business. Banks will not touch this, you can't even theoretically legally deposit the cash, so it's just bags of cash. I have a quote here by Reverend Scott Immler, who co-wrote the California Medical Marijuana Law. "We created the law so patients would not have to deal with black market profiteers, but today it is all about money. Most of the dispensaries operating in California are a little more than dope dealers with storefronts." And that comes from a man that helped draft the law in California.
Yes, Lou.
So, so I'd like to propose, based on the need to contain it because of security reasons, that we combine them both. And I, I hear what you're saying about having it on RA land, but then you've got maybe two, potentially two different.
Security details.
Yeah, security issues, you know, or scopes you're having to navigate, and, and because we're not necessarily trying to promote it, but we're trying to contain it. So if people in our town are required to just do it in a contained building, then maybe they want to go somewhere else. I mean, you know, I, so we don't necessarily need to open it wide to make provisions for it.
Well, I just, I just want to make it clear that we've talked a lot about containing it, and for a lot of good reasons, but, and, and I'm not going to go on tonight about this because I thought some more people, this is a public hearing, and I, I think we would have, if we had some public people saying, because I know a lot of towns have had people who actually, people with disabilities who really want this close to them, so they can use it because it helps their health, and, and, you know, we could use those people, or people who are planning on opening these, or a farmer who thought that their greenhouse. So a month ago, we had a farmer who thought their greenhouse would be appropriate, and so that, they had made a case for it. You know, they're not here to make a case for it, I don't need to make cases for people, but I just want to put it out there that those are things that are, are being discussed. And they, there's a positive side to having these things in your town, both the cultivation and the dispensary. So, you know, so I don't want to go too much further, but I don't know if Carolyn had any more discussion with, with Yop, who was here publicly and said, he was putting it out there.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to, you know, if you want to, the overlay district to encompass existing greenhouses, I don't know, I don't know if you can do that.
Yeah, that gets tricky.
Yes.
I, I think somebody, somebody.
And the individual non- contiguous properties.
It just, yeah, it, it.
Well, as, as somebody, as somebody just mentioned, I mean, we can make it as restrictive as we want to, and then.
We can relax it if necessary.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a, you know, we're not, we're not here to try and make it easy for them.
I, I think for this town meeting, we need to get something on the books.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Because we're, believe me, my phone is ringing.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's slick salesman, and I, I need, we need some guidelines for us to work with, so.
And then maybe later when DPH has more.
That, if, if Yop wants to come and, and talk about a specific proposal, then if we can encompass it to, you know.
Yeah, he should have been here to speak for himself.
I'll break out one thing, if you do nothing, it's allowed anywhere, I know there's an attorney here that can correct me on this one, because I went to a seminar about it. If you do nothing, it's allowed anywhere retail sales in town presently, parallel.
Which is why we want to do something.
Why?
He was listening, he was paying attention.
Yeah, turn that.
And also, we don't want to get into that definition of agriculture either, so, you know, it's like, yeah.
So, you can always amend the bylaw at the next annual town meeting, but if it's a special town meeting, if you restrict it to something, the overlay or whatever, at least we have a fighting chance of controlling it. Getting some regulations on this thing.
Once again, the risks are unknown, therefore, we need to contain it as small as possible, right now, and we can relax if we see the need.
Risk is if we do nothing, that's the major risk.
And one, one nonprofit doing the whole thing.
That's a risk, that's not.
No, no, it's not a risk.
No, I, I, I'm quite sure that.
That's what I'm saying we should do, is make it so that it's not too, it can't be two individual things.
Don't separate cultivation and.
Don't separate, keep them right together, one, one operation.
We're only going to get one license if they get it from the town of Deerfield, but if you separate the two, you could get a grower. And I'll use a previous person you talked about as an example. He can't get a license because he's not a US citizen, is my understanding. So he would be working for somebody else as a subcontractor under their license. So you could wind up with two places in town, even though nothing was used in town from this place, that could be dispensed at Washington.
And.
Separating them is.
But again, I've heard some of the same people selling it, and there's jobs go along with it, and you can hear estimates of thirty or forty jobs, and we like, we want to promote decent paying jobs, so, I mean, you can get into different.
There should be mandatory drug testing for our employees too.
I know, I know.
I don't see that as a deal. Yeah, yeah, I know.
This is what we need to work out, because, you know, the estimates that we've heard, up to ninety. I mean, you know, it's all done.
So let's move forward on our overlay, and it's, so we're going to combine, everybody's happy with combining cultivation and dispensary and, and the third one, they all come under that same heading of.
I'm for that.
Treatment center, dispensary.
Single heading, yeah.
Medical marijuana treatment center.
On Brown's or something. That goes under there too.
It does, yeah.
I mean, I think, Paul, you're saying the same thing I am, grow and dispensary in the same overlay district that we're talking about. Well, I'm saying one entity if there's two different things being done.
Well, you might still get a, a request for a license that was.
Well, then you deal with it, you deal with it.
It would all be in one.
But be as restrictive as we can right up front, so that we're, we're, we've, we've really encapsulated as much as we can, and then we could relax it later if we need to, but I'd say, make it as tight as we can. That's my opinion.
Thank you for that, Paul.
So, right, so what's, the wording is that, is just.
I'm not sure what the wording is, but.
The wording is just medical marijuana treatment center.
Because that covers all.
We've got the definition.
And it covers them all, we take the definition.
So if they only want to do the dispensary and not cultivate, that's, or they could do both on there, is what you're saying.
I, I would say so, yeah.
They can't do it in two different places.
I think, I think that the same owner has to do both by the state law. No, that's wrong?
They have to have this, the licenses have to be connected though. Every cultivation has to be connected to a dispensary, but they don't have to be the same.
No, because that's where we're getting the inquiries from, these different states to have growing here. But again, you, you know, I wasn't as concerned because you're dealing with one person versus general public.
All right.
I'm really concerned we address the general public's exposure.
Well, the thing of it is, is if, if, if somebody wants to just grow it, and somebody else is willing to grow it and sell it, and it's local, then you, you've, you've got them pinned into that, so that you don't have that, that outside influence.
I say we get writing.
And so I think we also want to continue with the five hundred feet from.
Well, we have to.
Children. You might as well put it in here, it's a good double. We had it.
We could, we can leave that, if you look at the table in dimensional.
Right, you had it already on.
That, that footnote number ten, you mean, the same, it would, it would not say any kind, just no medical marijuana facility shall be sighted within a radius of five hundred feet.
Right.
The other, the other ones, we'll have to think about those other buffers.
Well, well, now, even when you do the overlay, you can still make it special permit? So they have to come to you to, to do it, okay? That has to be at the public hearing also, doesn't it, the fact that it's going to be a special permit?
Yeah, that would definitely be key.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, that's.
Yeah, you'd have, you'd have to use a new language, another rap, all of that would have to be in place before the legal notice gets published. Because that has to, that's the point, a legal notice, let the public know the information is available for their review.
So if you're changing special permitting authority with the select board, that's a big change.
Yeah, I don't know if those setback things, and the other ones are already in there.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand that, are you saying that, that the selectmen will decide the spec?
Well, we need to.
Okay, that's what, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't catch that right off, so that's why I was.
Because normally, it would default to the zoning board, we could say it's us, or we could say it's the select board, so we're proposing the select board.
So, does, I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks of that one.
Well, I, I mean, I brought it up just because I think that, I think that that is a more prominently elected board, I think we are, we are elected, but.
People pay more attention to the select board than they do the planning board or the zoning board.
Guys, good with that?
No, seriously.
Max? You good with that?
No.
Who do you, who do you want to be the special permit?
Well, what's wrong with the ZBA?
Well, one thing is they're not elected. And that, they're appointed, and, and I think they also don't meet regularly, and so somehow it is, I, I'm not, not, they're terrific.
Reflect the wider cross-section of the.
I think it should be an elected board that, that does hold the special permitting process, I think first and foremost, that's most important.
I think it's, the provenance of, those people come together, they're not, it's not, there's no transparency in how this, they.
It's three people.
I, I know, but it's not.
Wait, the select board is three people, but there's more, but she's saying there's more transparency maybe at the select board, because it's much more visible.
Right.
That's what I think, I just think it's more visible, we know who they are, that.
Do the select board want to do this?
Yeah, I was going to say, could they reject it?
I mean, do you guys want to do this thing, have this?
Well, we're up, as Board of Health, we're also Board of Health.
That's true, so it's going to come to you.
There you go.
Oh, so that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
We want to stay on top of it, from a security point of view, but also from a.
I mean, you have the most. Yeah, and I'd say selectmen, I'd say that's the way to go. The most contact with our police, I mean, it just.
Well, we supervise the police, but we, you could say it's a select board and Board of Health, because we're one in town, so.
But you need to be convinced as one and the other.
But it's, just, we can just say select board.
Oh, well, that's true, so just say select board, I mean, we act as the Board of Health too.
It's your attorney.
Just to say you can't make the Board of, Board of Health, even though they wear another hat, you can only make the selectmen, special permitting granting authority. The Board of Health has no statutory purview under forty-eight, so you have to use just the selectmen.
Thank you.
Even though they wear both, they wear the same hat.
Thank goodness he drove all the way from Williamsburg.
We're getting our money's worth, aren't we? I hope we're getting more than our money's worth, actually, because we ain't paying.
The select board is, as Board of Health, is concerned with Board of Health issues, so that, you know.
Yeah.
No, absolutely.
Pointed by the porch selectman.
That's true.
It's a little excessive.
David Mary.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, can we just go back for a second to those footnotes in regard to the dimensional requirements?
Yeah.
You instructed me before voting, but we're just trying to get the details down, you want to keep the five hundred foot buffer between places where children congregate, correct?
That, that's the mass.
Why not?
You know, and with our overlay, we already.
That is what would be the default if you do nothing.
Right. And I think we've, with the overlay, we've already done that, if we ever revisit this, that we can change, change it, correct?
So then for the other ones, there were, I had defaulted to the largest setbacks, the footnotes eight and nine, for front, rear, and side yards. Requiring them to be the largest possible in those districts for the medical marijuana treatment centers, you want to just have those default to whatever they are in that district and take those footnotes out?
I think so, especially if we're trying to use buildings that are already there, we don't want to mess with, make them five feet different or something, and let the special permit deal with, you know.
And, and where did the thirty thousand square feet come into play, I heard that earlier.
Are they going to take the front off the building, you know?
Yeah, right, just to make it work, right.
It was shown to me for somebody, I've already seen the proposal for a facility, they were reviewing it for a building construction.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just thinking that it's a, to contain as much as possible and say, we don't need to be supplying anyplace else, I mean, that many other places are whatever.
Dick was looking at it from a building code point of view, whether he needs strike orders and all that kind of stuff.
There has been towns that, that have done the laws that, that, that are even more, that are, that are constricted than what we're proposing, actually, we're being quite liberal, honestly. If it, if it were entirely up to me, I would only choose the planned industrial. But they, they have put their bylaws in front of the attorney generals, and the attorney generals have accepted them with this smaller, very small pieces of property, in fact.
You realize that when you write this bylaw, pass this bylaw, the selectmen can't automatically just approve it. If there's any deviation, or one foot of frontage or something, it has to go to the ZBA, correct, Matt?
If it.
If it did change.
If it was non-conforming.
Anything that doesn't comply, anything that is not exactly conforming, it would go to the ZBA first, and then.
Well, but that's a different special permit, that's, that's more for setbacks and.
Two shots at it, passing or not passing.
It might trigger a site landing.
When it, when it comes to the special permit process, do we have to write up a, a guideline for the special permit at some point, does that have to be done?
If you thought that there were specific provisions outside of those regular provisions that are being applied as special permit criteria now, you could include those in this special section, or they could be added later, until you were ready to do that now.
Okay, so it does not have to be done tonight to get this written, the special permit?
Well, it'll, if, if you do not address it, it will flow under the regular special permit criteria existing in the bylaws.
So, okay, so we advertise this, it goes in front of the town, the town says yes or no, then we, as the planning board, probably want to act, because even though you are the special, you would be theoretically the special permit authority, it still would be the planning board that would write the special permit. No, it would be the select board, okay?
Kelly, in the truth, John, we do not have that information, right?
No, exactly, that's, that's why it's moved right now.
I've been, I have questions to DPH on, on a lot of how they're putting their phases on this, and they haven't gotten back to me. So, I mean, if we had to write it tonight, I would completely be able to, because there's been a lot of information, there's too many questions. And we haven't thought of, we have, I mean, we have raised enough questions that we, Dick and I will be attending more meetings, because we've asked for more meetings at our regional public health meeting. And it's on the agenda for falling funding for Mohawk Area Public Health Coalition that I'm chair of, up here in Greenfield. We're, we're discussing what we need, we feel like is some of the issues that need to be addressed, and, and demand the issues be answered by DPH, because they're not giving us the answers. So, we're, we're not even, we're even being able to do the special permitting process criteria evaluation at this point, just because we don't have the answers.
But just if you go to our section fifty-three hundred, special permits, it basically says the granting authority gets to weigh the proposed use outweighs its detrimental, the, the proposed use outweighs its detrimental impacts on the town or neighborhood in view of particular characteristics. You go into socioeconomic, traffic, security.
So we have that pretty well covered.
Fiscal impact, it even talks about tax base, so, so it's kind of like covered.
It's way.
Those are, those are the, those are the issues they're going to look at.
Okay, that's good, that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah, so if they say, oh, we're going to lose so much tax base, they can just say, then no, you're not going to get it for that, for that reason, so, so we don't have to get into the details of that tonight.
Right. And if the more questions need answered, or something may identify things that they have to specifically add in, which could be done.
There was one thing here about size, do we want to say anything about? There was one thing here about size. Do we wanna say anything about size yet, or we don't know enough about that even?
Well, I just. I don't think we know enough about that.
You know, this is getting, at your point, you don't want it to become a.
Right.
Three hundred thousand square foot building, you know, but, um, but I guess that would be a detriment to the neighborhood, so that, you know, you could cut it out at that point.
That just, that would come under site plan review.
Yeah.
And, and we're, you know, trying to limit to pre-existing buildings.
Right.
But there's nothing that says somebody couldn't knock down a building and rebuild.
Right.
I mean, so, I hear what you're saying, but we don't have control necessarily over that.
We don't have any control over that.
But if they choose to do that, they're kicking themselves in their own foot, if they go knocking down buildings.
They still have to get a building permit.
Right.
Get a demo permit.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, but we can't, I mean.
And so we're talking a self-contained unit. It's gonna be inside, not outside.
It's part of the security requirement?
Well, yeah, but it sounded like it wasn't specifically.
No, it wasn't specific, but, but the restrictions.
These are restrictions that they do have already, it has to be indoors.
Okay.
As we understand.
All right.
And as police officers.
Pat, just.
The problem is, is our other responsibilities, we're not really sure of, and it's not been clarified.
When it comes to the special permitting time, if it gets to that point, what can we as the town ask for when it comes to the security part of it? You know, the, the, the police aspect of it, the, the ambulance aspect of it, you know, uh, because we don't know what potentially could become of this. You know, some, some old lady drug driving down to pick up her fix and smashes into a telephone pole.
Well, number one, we, I would envision setting this up as a yearly permit, just like we do tobacco.
So it would be a yearly.
It might be sent to the U.S. specified in this bylaw.
Yeah, I.
I'd consider the special permit as a two-year permit. And I want a one-year permit that you might want to.
So it would have to come up for renewal? Nice, that's, I like that.
We have no experience, so obviously the first year.
You didn't want a.
Two years of the year.
Mm-hmm.
And we'd be, um, John, our police officer is exceptional at tracking stuff, so he would obviously be tracking our costs. Dick would track costs of the health department doing inspections for food safety issues, what other, what other, building inspector issues. You know, what, what does it cost our department, you know, to go down and do inspections? Dick is thinking we need to have sprinklers and.
Yeah, there, there's fire suppression, think about that.
Because realistically, Carolyn.
Yeah.
There's just a lot of issues, John, that I can't even answer.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, the list goes on and on, and.
The regulations are gonna have to fit in, similar to our tobacco regulations. Tobacco regulations that we're adopting now include marijuana smoking in public and all that stuff.
Specifically included.
And we're gonna have to include, or the selectmen are gonna have to include, a penalty and fine schedule for offenses to this.
Second hand getting high.
More teeth than selling an eighteen-year-old or seventeen-year-old pack of cigarettes, is a little bit different. So we have violations, selling to somebody without a permit, et cetera, the fines seem to be happening.
We're, we're updating our.
So we're gonna have to generate that.
We're updating our tobacco regulations on Wednesday, you know, and our public hearing for that, um, to include this medical marijuana and e-cigarettes, and stuff like that.
So we're still working on our overlay?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're getting ahead of ourselves.
Some of the other language that was in here that, I don't know if it needs to be in here, it says, um, so we could say the special permit shall only be issued following a public hearing held within sixty-five days.
That'll be required, we just referenced.
All right. Any special permit under this law shall lapse within one year, blah, 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 those, that, those, so there's likely.
Right, that's, that's different language, that would have to be there.
All right, so do we want?
Typically laps out for two years, but, you know, we could, we would reference section fifty-three thirty as to those other provisions, which.
This is some taken out of the adult one, because, so we must have put some ex- some more like stringent into it.
Okay.
So I'm saying, do we wanna do that here?
So we should look at that as, as our template for how to approach the specialties.
Again, we had no experience with that, so the idea was, we had to have something, because we could say no, and it seemed like we had an intimate person that was interested right away. So, um, you know, we set that up really quick.
Yeah.
The idea was to review it to see if we had any.
But basically, it, it responds to the things that we say, it has to respond to a special permit, so, okay, so all these things. I mean, the special permit can ask for everything.
Mm-hmm.
That's the reason for the special permit.
That's why the overlay is so.
Yeah, all right. All right, Pat, anything else? We need to.
Well, you need to figure out the timing, and, you know, obviously, I, I think you guys need to package this and vote it as a package. You're not gonna have a chance to look at this again.
Right.
Right, what we.
Normally, normally if we had time, I'd bring a vacuum draft, and you'd vote at having a paper draft in front of you that you marked up. You're not gonna have time to do that, so.
But I would like to put in this, maybe our vote, is that this will go to legal counsel tomorrow as well, because they're, she's expecting anything, right? So if it.
It's a lot to get done tomorrow.
Well, before our public, before our next public.
That's what we need to talk about, the timing.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if we were just making a little tweak to add our age in the use table, that's gonna happen tomorrow. Now we're talking about a map, um, and some time to make these changes. I can try to do that tomorrow, but I'm committing to other people's time beyond myself at that point, so I'm, I can, you know, it's difficult for me to commit that it's absolutely ready to go tomorrow. I'm gonna tell you probably a couple days, it's gonna be needed.
Let me ask you this question. Can we have the public hearing an hour before the town meeting?
You can, you can, and I was.
So why not just, why not just do that?
I've talked with the, uh, the interim town manager about that.
Yeah.
She points out, and correctly so, that it's a little bit of an administrative problem. But it, it is my understanding that it is legal to do so. So that gives you another couple days to work with in terms of getting things out and having it happen, so I, yes, I believe that.
Is anybody, I would recommend that.
I, I don't object.
Fine.
You couldn't make him change.
What's, what's the date of the meeting?
Meeting.
Well, we're gonna make it.
We're not gonna make it.
No, it's the many ways.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Whatever we.
Yeah, yeah.
So whether we have it four days before it, or an hour before it, it doesn't.
Doesn't matter, okay.
And to tell you the truth, we really publicize it, and then we'll save mo- time during the town meeting, because you know people are gonna come to the town meeting, wanna talk about it, so have them come an hour early.
Oh, good idea, yeah, 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 yeah.
You know what, can I suggest an hour and a half early? That was my neat point, is I probably knew how long this discussion is gonna last, we've seen tonight.
Well, here's the Travis thing, shame on us for not acting on this.
Oh, I think we're, we're faster than most towns, we.
No, 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 but I mean, as soon as that law was passed back in January, we should have started talking about this.
I think that'd be a good cheer.
But I, I think we've come a long way in the short, short period of time that we.
Five-thirty, we do a public hearing?
Sounds fine. Okay, what day is that?
So that gives us, then, that gives you three days back.
Oh, he's a gatehead.
But I think, because we're not gonna come back to it if we say that this will be reviewed by.
You're bringing pizza, John.
By the furca again, by, uh.
It's a council, well, in the meanwhile. Council will always review anything that goes onto the warrant, and she's been reviewing these because of this issue prior to the public hearing.
So I just wanna make sure that we're all talking the same language. We're talking planned industrial, south of one sixteen.
Correct, the entire district.
The entire district, and the piece of industrial property that was formerly Deerfield Plastics.
And without any little right of way.
Without little right of way, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
Well, were you still talking planned industrial? I thought you just learned.
No, 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 no.
Uh, we need to have it bigger than, yeah.
PI is industrial.
That would be grow and cetera.
It'll be everything, marijuana treatment center, whatever.
We're defining it.
John, is that, when you say what used to be Deerfield, but, but basically we need to, is it two properties, or on the maps, it's probably more than one property, so.
No, I think, I think it's one.
Well, one ownership, but it might, might be different properties. So I would just, I mean, we wanna be specific about the.
It'd be Barker Steel, it would be Deerfield Plastics.
No, it doesn't get to crop production, I don't think.
It would be the cornfield, too, that Yankee Candle owns.
Not up to the corner, that corner lot's not part of it.
Right, but there's a.
But there's a cornfield.
I think there's some trees in.
You don't wanna, you, we're gonna be saying the colored area, except.
Except that right of way piece sticking out.
Except the Elm Street was spoken of, because we can't list specific parcels that get in your sparks, you know.
For all related districts, they let you get away with that.
Oh, okay.
Because that's what they, a lot of towns have done that for their solar installations, they've identified single properties.
I, I, whatever that colored area is, what you, I think.
We're already, but now we're, we're losing our separation from, from the, the town, from the town, if we, you know, crop production is right there, um, easy walkability for, for younger kids, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I, I would prefer specifically in the industrial zone, the Atlantic property, formerly Deerfield Academy. I mean Deerfield Academy, for formerly Deerfield Plastics.
Wow, okay. There's, is there any other buildings there, in the areas that are vacant?
That, that's the only vacant building.
Well, it's not vacant, someone owns it, they're using it as a warehouse, so it's not part.
Under the way.
So they're using the whole thing.
No, let's just go with planned industrial, period.
Oh, that, you're kinda worried about something. In back of the crop production, along MXI, in Alvin Elm Street, there's a wetland area. A little sliver up the side, it's wetlands, the only part that's not is coming down to the Deerfield Plastics building, and there is some empty space in there.
Right.
So, even if you include it, it won't pass conservation, even if you include the whole piece, it's not gonna pass conservation.
But again, I, I think we're getting close to that threshold, five hundred feet to where.
Well, it doesn't make any difference, because.
You're from the building.
We're back to the same zoning issue, where there's no legal access. The only access is back from the driveway in Deerfield Plastics. You can't, you can't cross into that C-two commercial to get to the industrial.
Same problem.
No, but, but, but because it's an overlay, that, that probably doesn't kick in, right?
Yeah, it would still apply, that would still apply.
Yeah.
It'd still, so you've got that situation.
Okay.
Pat, do you have the sign-in sheet?
Um, I have it here.
You can't build in there, is what I'm trying to say.
People to sign.
Very difficult. He was here already.
Oh, were you here before? Oh, I'm sorry, never mind, never mind.
You signed both of them?
Once again, I, I, I would prefer to keep it as tight as possible by just going with that Atlantic furniture property and the planned industrial versus. Can we do, does everybody, yes or no on that?
I'm having a hard time knowing if there's any other.
Yeah, I don't, I can't visualize it myself.
I would just say anything that's owned industrial, I don't know why, because it's not, if there is anything else, it's only.
What do you think?
I, I, I think it's already restricted by all the natural pieces, so why not add it? That gives you two options, and a special permit, go one place, and a special permit goes the other, you're very unlikely to get a special permit in both, and if you don't like, you know.
You're only gonna get one.
Exactly.
The town gets one.
So it's a choice, but it's only two, and they're two that we, we feel okay with.
I think it's less, what's zoning, too, to just say. Industrial self.
Well, I think Pat's saying, we, this case, you can spot more or less.
Cause when you start saying one, I know, but I still don't.
But you're not, you're not saying it's the only place, you're saying, pick one of.
Okay, so does that, does that resolve it now? Have we answered all your questions?
I need you guys to vote this.
Well, that's why I'm saying that, to go, what are we voting?
So I'll read you what my notes are, where I've, and then you can tell me what I've got wrong, and we'll fix it, and then you can vote.
Excellent.
So, um, make it an annual special permit under the authority of the Board of Selectmen as the special permit granting authority.
Yeah.
Create an overlay district that would consist of PI and the lower industrial zone minus the right-of-way piece that sticks up. Take it out of the use table and condense all types of centers into one definition of medical marijuana treatment center. So that's what I've got.
And PI, is that only that section right down there, right?
Yeah, that's the exact part.
Good.
Should we still, on our, on our use table, as our friend, Mr. Decker pointed out, like where it says agricultural, should we say not including?
Right.
Medical marijuana?
You know what, I'd appreciate it, just because.
And under medical centers, say not including medical.
It saves, it saves anybody challenging it, it's what it is, it's legal fees for us.
So you have several agricultural uses.
Well, there's, there's exempt, and then there's other agricultural use, I think is.
And there's fur, fur, yeah, I guess.
The pigery doesn't.
So that would, yeah, so you, so you wanna do.
Pigs will get high.
So you wanna do a footnote on all the ag.
So basically, in our ag definitions, we just wanna say medical, marijuana is not considered agriculture.
Right, no matter what the state says, we, we say.
Do, do we change the definition, we add language to the definition for medical marijuana treatment center that says, this is not a, da, da, da.
No, I'd feel better in the use table, in the use table, because they have not given us a good definition, so if it's not in our, we just say it's not in the use table, then we are covering ourselves, whether, no matter what.
So is that as simple as medical marijuana, or marijuana is not considered agriculture, period? Marijuana grown.
Whatever the attorney gives us.
I, yeah, I think you're gonna say not to include medical marijuana treatment facilities. I don't think we wanna make any statement or something, you know, determination, legal determination.
But then I'm wondering, where it says retail sales, do we have to put not including medical marijuana treatment? You can't put it, you, then you're not putting it on every place.
You can't put a footnote on everything, I, I.
B and B, not including medical marijuana.
This is the medical danger.
I'm gonna ask for kind of.
So maybe, what you're saying is the definition thing.
You hear the specific bylaw provision or the definition itself, but specified that it does not qualify as any of these specific uses, including agricultural, retail, medical, et cetera, as defined on the use table. Like it's in one place, and they're gonna be looking at that, that bylaw piece, right?
So that would get people away from coming and saying, this is retail.
Hopefully.
Good.
We, we can't.
Hopefully.
Oh, you can't.
Well, they could come say it, I guess, but we have a better.
Yeah.
Chance of saying, no, it's not.
Right, right. So, I have one more question, I'm gonna have to approach the table if I may, because I need to look at your zoning, because we need to figure out where in the zoning this would go, and I did not bring my coat.
So it's forty, forty-six hundred is the, um. Adult use, so would it go right after that one?
Well, how's the numbering go?
Forty-seven.
Remember, remember the, um, the meeting is at the frontier of the morning, so the public hearing will be at the.
Right.
And, well, that'll be.
Then forty-eight gets into planned development.
See, that's the problem with the numbering, we have to, we're gonna have to squish this in here somewhere.
Forty-nine, performance standards, oh wow, we added a bunch of things. So we don't have a, we don't have a five thousand, then it goes from forty-nine forty to fifty-one.
But that would be, but five thousand would be Article Five, which is administration.
So this would have to be like forty-nine fifty or something.
But that's part of forty-nine hundred, which is those performance standards. So we have a little shoehorning problem here.
Can't you be, um, or you can't have it.
Six, six, fifty or something.
Thirty-nine hundred point five.
So then we get five, do, you gotta go up to six thousand?
Well, you got, you do have your Article Six already, that's where your definition's by. Yeah, yeah, that's nice. That's nice, too.
This is an interesting question. Is really, you really want it under special regulations? I think we're gonna have to figure out a way to shoehorn it in here. I may have to re, I may have to refer to counsel on how to, on how best to do that.
Oh, I mean, for the past.
Like forty-nine fifty, but you're saying forty-nine fifty comes under forty-nine hundred?
Yeah, under forty-nine hundred.
Just nothing that we could say, maybe.
It's no four thousand, you give it four thousand.
I did that, which is ten, maybe.
But then what do you do the next time? At some point, you have to, uh.
It's a difference, they all start this way, but.
At some point, you gotta add a.
So I, I guess the best we could do tonight would be to do an struck need to put it under Article, uh, Four. Special regulations as the console town council wants to do.
That's what we ask you.
I was always the one in my family, my hutch is hot.
Somewhere in Article Four.
You know, my sister did it. Really? Not that hot.
Yeah.
But we agreed not to do the footnote, to put it in the text of the regulation itself, correct, to not put multiple footnotes all over the use table? So wherever it goes in section four, that's, it will specify that it does not constitute those uses as shown on there.
Yeah, but I guess the question is, if someone starts at the use table.
Yeah, but then, they still, it's too bad.
They have to find it.
Too bad for you.
Thank you, well put, Carol.
They will, presumably they'll be starting at the beginning, and they'll look at the districts, and they'll see that there's an overlay district.
Oh, that there's a special regulation, right, okay, that's, right.
And, and, and that, that reference.
Right.
Um, is the rare in the bylaw about. And, and, and that, that reference, um, is the rare in the bylaw about...
No, they won't have to look, they're going to know real time, right now, where it's going to be.
So can we vote now, Pat?
I'm ready.
Are we ready to vote?
I'm ready to vote.
I think Rachel's got a motion right at the tip of her tongue.
So the only thing that's different from what we have to use before was that we determined that we would add that language specifying that it does not qualify as a...
Anything else on the use table.
And that it will vote in Section Four, numbering to be determined in consultation.
Yes. Excellent.
How do you make a motion on something that doesn't exist yet?
Well, you're moving to add a special regulation under Article Four for, and medical marijuana treatment center overlay district.
That's what I'm saying?
Yes. With the, uh...
Did you get that down?
Oh, yeah, you have...
I'm writing it down.
Like the moderator, they could put it in writing on paper.
Yeah.
Okay, so proposal?
Motion.
Motion made by Rachel B.
To...
Add an overlay district for medical marijuana treatment centers in Article Four of the Deerfield bylaws under special regulations. An overlay district which includes planned industrial and the industrial zone south of Elm Street.
That borders Route Five.
Borders Route Five.
Now, do you also want to put in here the open meeting, I mean, the public meeting, or leave the separate motion for that?
Separate motion.
Yeah, you'll get it.
All right.
And that the select board will be the special permit granting authority.
So permit to last within one year.
Annual permit.
Annual, there you go.
For a single medical marijuana treatment center definition.
Facility here.
So moved by Rachel, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Abstain?
Max, you didn't raise your hand, did you do one or the other?
Oh, seven, zero, zero.
Seven, zero, zero.
Okay.
I heard a bunch of yeses, and so I, that's why I had to clarify, it was only, only if I heard no on the other ones, then I have to assume everybody said yes, because it was so noisy in here.
Yeah, I, I heard the buttons on that computer typing, it's, they're starting to smoke a little, too.
So then the timing is, um, okay, so then you want to make a motion to have the, um, the public hearing?
Yeah, just, what, at five-thirty, the day, the, the night of the...
The twenty-eighth of October.
Twenty-eighth of October.
At Frontier.
At Frontier, maybe.
Is it going to be in the hall, or you have another room, or? Right in the auditorium, okay. All right.
I hate to say I'll be away at a conference, I hope we're going to have a call, I won't be able to be here. I'll be out of town.
I'll be here, far as I know.
Can our lawyer friend be here?
We have to ask the Perviers first.
They're paying him.
I can tell you that that, one of the reasons why that town, that date for the town meeting was chosen was because town council can be there. So this would be, obviously should be notified that this would be happening earlier, and hopefully she...
We actually were going to do it a week ahead, earlier, so it was...
Yeah, good.
Well, thank you.
Well, this was one of the ones that influenced them, yeah.
Yeah.
There's not a whole lot of other, are there many other warrants that, any other votes?
They're going to have to have, they're going to have to hold a place on the warrant, with whatever...
I was wondering if there's much other business that night, that's all I was asking, but, sorry.
Well, we have, um, this one, we have EMS, um, we have the ag, um, open space.
Oh, okay. So the EMS is the big...
So, um, who seconded Paul's motion to have a meeting?
Dave Rages for open space.
Roger, did you second it?
Did you second it?
Roger seconded.
Seconded by Roger. Any discussion about the, the public hearing? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Seven, zero, zero.
So they may, Mr. Chair.
At the, just quickly, at the end of that public hearing, we can then make a recommendation, we'll be asked, that's, and then we take that recommendation to the, to the town meeting.
So you'll have to make that determination then and there, and, you know, bring it immediately.
And then we have a town, town meeting, you stand up and say you recommend it, because we wouldn't...
We won't be written down, right, yeah, all right, all right. Yes, two ahead of us.
I thought I was going to ask about, and still raise the question, the perviers going forward...
So we're going to deliberate on that after...
Not done any deliberations on that yet.
So we're going to do that...
So we, yeah.
Now, I guess.
You kind of know where you stand, that, that we can draft a recommendation on that one and have it out of the way.
All right, so getting back to our agenda.
We still have another hearing to deliver.
And we got two, two ANRs to do.
One of which is heat, one of the ANRs.
Do we want to deliberate first, or do the ANR?
Yes.
Deliberate first.
Well, yeah, Rachel, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah, the second, yeah.
So, um, can I hear any input from the planning board members about the pervier zoning change request?
I, I suggest that we...
Or does anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I, I move that we, we re, um, reapprove it, that we, we give our, our endorsement to it.
Oh.
Um, okay.
What's that?
Discussion?
Is that a formal proposal?
I see this, yeah, I move, I move that we endorse it.
No, I don't think we should.
Okay, well, there we go, let's either get a second, or then come up with another motion.
Is there a second?
Second or a motion, one or the other.
Oh, okay, we have a second, any discussion?
No, yeah, Roger?
Yeah, I feel that from the first time this went through, that the people on that street, they didn't want to see any more development or growth, and that's why we withdrew that little portion. If anything, I think it should all become residential. It is unfair for pervers, they really can't use that property, so we need to do something, but I don't think that, what Paul is suggesting is the right answer for, uh, the community.
I'm, I'm concerned that we just went through this huge thing for months and months, and this didn't get put on the table until after we were done, and, and that just, I find unacceptable in terms of, there was a whole process and several meetings, public hearings on it, and for it to come up now to be considered.
All right, where, where, you can't say anything. Anything to report?
We've voted on this before.
I'm concerned because I think that this property, we made decisions based on... We didn't consider this property behind thoroughly enough, and like, what Roger said, it's not, you know, we know that the townspeople along that street are not looking for more industrial properties, at the same time, that was an industrial property for a long time, and now to create it as a non-industrial property, ergo, kind of a null and void situation.
But we didn't.
But they can't do anything with it, because it's not, unless we change us.
That's the way it was, yeah.
No, because they could have...
Well, I think, I, nobody knows really what the true intent was back in nineteen sixty-six, but I think they wanted limited access to that. They didn't want, like, driveways popping up everywhere, and maybe they were right and wrong in their thought process back then.
Well, if I, if I remember correctly, Roger, it was brought up that at the time that that was split into two different zoning parcels, the zoning allowed it to be used for either. They could just cross right over that front part and use their industrial in the back.
No.
That's the way I heard it, Roger, now if I'm wrong, there's somebody else, you'll have to get somebody here to tell you that, then.
Did you have any comments on this?
I guess my recommendation to the landowners would be, I mean, I, I've heard perhaps solar, if that's correct, what I would recommend to them is, is propose a plan and revisit it to do like an overlay or something like that, that's...
It's just like John said, you, if it's industrial, uh, one day it could be this, the next day it could be that, I mean...
No, no, but I mean, if there's a specific, if, if they have like a specific intent right now, today, say it were solar...
I think what their intent is, John, is they would like to use it in some manner, so you'd probably like to maybe use it in industrial, but they can't the way it is set up right now.
And that's fully understandable. And that's fully understandable, so...
And I'd also, I also say that, and we had the last time we met, the gentleman that's in front of the property was the only one that got up and specifically wanted that one parcel to be changed back.
I don't think anybody on the street wanted any of it to happen, Paul, as I remember.
That's okay, but the only one that got up and spoke was the gentleman that spoke tonight. I didn't hear anybody else talk to that one parcel specifically, other than that gentleman who's in front.
He spoke to the whole thing, Harding's, we talked about that piece of property.
Oh, Harding's got up and wanted to...
Just listen, Paul, for a second, to the north of it, we talked about putting another driveway, uh, making the front of that, uh, industrial, and the people on the ne, in that neighborhood voiced the opinion, they didn't want to see that happen. They understand Harding's own that piece of property, they didn't want to take that right away from them, so we didn't. They have access to it from the two driveways or the two right-of-ways they have now, but that was a proposal of making a separate access to that piece of property, and I heard it very loud and clearly, they didn't want that to happen.
As did I, I mean, that's really what I heard from the last meetings.
So we have a motion, um, it's been seconded, and we've had discussion, the motion is to, to, to recommend to town meeting, I believe, to, to change it to, uh, the front property to industrial.
And that doesn't mean that we, we're voting to have it turned to that. We're voting to take it to the town and saying that we, we, uh...
But then decide.
Okay.
All right, can we take a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, so that's voted, uh, two yeses, five noes, no abstentions. So the question is, that thing goes to the town meeting with a negative recommendation from the...
The town meeting could vote in favor, but nonetheless, it's by their recommendation.
Right.
Or they could vote against it, in which case the perviers would be barred from coming back with a similar recommendation.
Two yeses.
Or there could be another proposal put forward. Like a proposal to make it all residential. That's a, that's, that's a whole separate proposal, so that could come any time. Right, right, but it, it wouldn't be barred from coming.
Okay, if there were essentially a different proposal, the town might say, yes, we'll move soon, two years, I, I don't know. That, that would be...
All right. All right. Thank you, we'll move on to the next agenda item. So now it's a question of, it's nine-thirty, we have... You just have one A and R, I see two.
Two, one of them's the town.
One's under, one is coming under, um, number nine.
This is the easy one, does the gardener with the easement remove it?
Yep.
Can we do this one first?
All right.
As long, as long as they removed it, that's all we asked them to do. The other one joined us to town.
Right, it, it, it didn't make it the agenda, even though we knew it was needed to, so I don't know what happened.
Did we?
We got an email from Casey.
Yeah, an email came out today about that.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have...
Do we have the, uh...
No.
The town A and R, the one, one for the EPD, the town garage?
I think it's curled up under the...
Yeah, we have that one. I don't see, um...
No, we'll do those next time.
The minutes next time?
I don't, I don't want to do any more than we have to.
No, let's get, let's, if, if it's okay with everybody, let's, I, I mean, I knew this was going to be a long meeting tonight. Which paper are you from? You're with a recorder.
She's been following this medical marijuana story closely.
Yeah, she, oh, there's been a lot of... Well, there's, from what I can, the way I see it, there's two towns, Whately and Greenfield, that are like, you know, really, you're, like, pro, 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 come on, we want it.
Can you s...
There's us that are like, well, if we got to do it, we got to do it.
No, tomorrow morning, I mean, can we get, I'm trying to see if I have to sign something about what we just voted for.
In the town, you know, in Franklin County.
Sometimes, like an A and R, I gotta, I sign something, I make a note of it, there's nothing, there's not like, it wasn't really an application.
Yeah, but it's going to go to the town...
But it's in the minute.
It's going to go to the town warrant, no matter what.
Right, but it needs to know that we voted it down, but your minutes will reflect that, so... That we voted a negative, not to...
Not recommended down, that we didn't vote it down.
Right, right, all right, all right.
So you're the medical marijuana guru when it comes to writing articles about it?
All right, um, all right, well, anyway, we, we don't seem to have the actual written application, but, um...
I have it on my...
What we know is that they want to take away the easement. Remove the easement that we put on there about a year ago, was it, or less than that?
That just circles up behind through there, looks like it's... What are they going to...
That, that's, that looks like it's there, I don't get it.
This is the plot here, right? With the garage.
Oh, wait a second, no, this is Greenfield Road, Route Five and Ten, yeah.
Yep, yep, this is...
Yeah, so that's the locus, yeah, this is it.
This, well, yeah, so if you consider this to be south and this to be north, well, there it is, north there.
What is that, the steam mill road?
But that says land of town in difference, so here's Gregory's.
Oh.
Land that were formerly...
His gardener's.
The, the, um, the road came in and went over here like this, I thought.
This is his shop, this is his front auto body shop, this is his back auto body shop, the town Deerfield owns this, and this is where the medical, uh, building is, I believe, is like a...
Oh, okay, all right, so there is a, there is a road there?
Yeah, this would be over here, like, no, this is owned by the town of Deerfield.
Oh, and there's a right-of-way back there?
Well, I don't know what that is, it's the railroad bed, but Greg would come in like this, and this is what he's proposing for an easement.
So then we are now approving this with, because it was, he was asking for the easement like a day, okay, so now it's not here, so, um, anybody want to recommend or approve that?
I should not find the year, the, uh...
Yeah.
Application.
Well, I, I don't want to hold this up, I mean, it's, it's, this is the main thing, so do we want to sign this, do we want to make a motion?
Well, you just removed the easement, right?
Yeah.
So I, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we accept his proposal.
We endorse the, uh, A and R as presented, yeah. Do we have a second?
Awesome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain? Seven, nothing, nothing.
I see one here, it's not the...
That's too big, regular black ink works fine.
Yeah, black ink seems to work, actually, so... Lots of pens, but I don't know if I... Sure.
Is that October seventh?
It is the seventh.
All right, as we all sign that, can we, uh...
For another couple of three hours.
We need like a couple of... Still, I'm still thinking about those people on North Main Street, they don't know what's coming for this affordable housing.
Well, that's it, we all need to know that the affordable housing, special workshop is the twenty...
Eight, twenty-second.
Second, uh, this month.
And there will be zoning ramifications to it, if not, I think.
Well, do we do, yeah, the one my...
I think we usually do like four.
I know.
We'll tell them about that later.
Tell them about that later.
I can do blue on, I can do blue on the rest of it, right?
Give them a surprise. Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Alright, the next thing that's, um, we just got an application today is from the town of Deerfield, and it's an ANR.
Now, wait, we first, what about the, uh, vote for DA? Want to do that first in, in order, or you want to let?
Do you have an extra agenda there, Rachel, I?
Yeah, actually, I don't think I got one.
Here's that thing about, here's that, here's that letter, John, that you passed over to me, too. Thank you. This is a vote to release the balance of unused funds in escrow for DA physical plant project. Awesome.
So, I assume that they've got their occupancy permit and everybody's said it's all good and, I don't see, Dick, he's, has he gone?
I sent an email, I said, I, I said, someone's gonna tell us that...
Yeah, because I mean, we did...
They did, and then Casey sent an email to someone else, but I never got anything that said proof that...
I mean, this is just a request, hey, let's, let's see if we can...
Because we just got a...
Yeah, well, we wanted some...
Conforms from SVE.
Oh, well, here's an, here's an ad, is this the ASBIL? This is August third.
It's the owner's ASBIL.
Well, this has been on the agenda for several...
I know, and I keep asking them, what are we supposed to do with this, how are we supposed to know if it was, uh...
We should return the money.
In lieu of taxes.
Deerfield Academy gonna miss it?
How are your projects going?
I mean, it says it's an ASBIL, but who's here to tell us that it's, I mean, I just find all this very kind of mysterious.
All these private schools, you know?
Alright, so no, I don't want to, uh, take this up, Paul, I'm gonna call it a late night and say that we can do that next time.
Let's skip it then.
And now we have a ANR from the town of Deerfield asking to divide the existing parcel, pickle shop lot, into two parcels, one for the new highway garage building and the remaining empty land. So, um, hey, we need a couple more signers over there, and then we can unroll, you want to unroll that while we're going in, everybody taking a look at it?
Yeah, I'm so happy what she's digging up there, too, you know, the environmental sustainability, solar.
Lucy's doing stuff like this.
Stuff that's gonna be really good.
They're very similar, our girls. They're both kind of out there.
I heard, I heard the other day too, that they didn't find any, any bones in that burial. Which area? Where it is now, there's one.
Oh, the one, right.
It's an old, old one that...
You want to, um, tell us about it, or, or what do we want to look at? Roger, you want to tell people about it, and does it look good to you, or?
Not really much of opinion, it's a line.
Alright, so we know the pickle shop was like seventeen acres, we want to just parcel off the part that is now for the highway garage, I see, where's the road, is there two hundred?
This is the new road here.
Oh, great, and there's a hundred and eight feet of frontage, so what's up with that?
I just...
So is this looking for a special permit?
No, they're looking to break that out of there, but I just was curious... This is interesting here, I didn't understand that. Yeah, Carolyn, they're not supposed to do that, right?
Is that number there?
And it said something about bonding in the email I got.
And this is, and what's really important is that we can't, uh, borrow money unless this is sort of, um, separate.
But I don't see that...
We don't need to borrow any money.
Yeah, but this, oh, it's a hundred feet in this district, isn't it?
It's a hundred feet, yeah.
Alright, so, so that's a hundred and eight?
But now, Carolyn, like that access road that you put in through the rock, is that the access road for the rest of the property?
In the industrial park, yeah, at some point, but we're only putting a single, you know, it's a single lane now.
But the, okay, but the frontage is a hundred, it's more than forty thousand, I think, in this district. And there's this funky angle over here, and that...
Well, that, that has, that was part of the, you know, this is...
Part of the old, the old DPW property.
Yep.
Alright, anybody have questions?
We own this still.
I, I, yeah.
This is just so that we can bond it. But...
No, I understand what you're saying, but I just wondered why the town owns with existing highway things, why didn't, and I think Paul's question is, why didn't they make that?
Oh, this, um, you know what?
Does that line conform, actually?
That's what I'm worried about, I'm hoping, who, who did this?
Harold Eaton and Associates.
Did you read our bylaws, I hope?
We just, we just proved one, though, that was kind of iffy last time.
That has, that has something to do with, um...
Well, that's an existing lot line, so you're not creating that lot line.
Yeah, we're not.
Oh, if that's existing, then it's moved.
Oh, you think this?
That is existing. That one there is, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think this, this was separate from the rest of the parcel.
It was, it was originally two parcels, yes.
Because the town owned that, and then they get...
Okay, yeah, so that is existing, because it runs into there, so I, I think that makes it move, because it was existing, they're just retracing the existing line.
And that was one of the comments that the engineers got in fact to make those lines more clear.
That was, yeah, that was another reason why it was...
I know you did, but it was, it was a show, you used to say that, it's, it's a dairy thing, it's just moved.
We still own this.
Yeah, I understand that.
Really, you're, you're creating...
This is the new line.
You're creating this line right here.
Right.
Exactly. But they're combined, but they are combining the whole lot.
It's combined now.
Well, the other thing that's interesting here is that now, is, is what I don't understand, is this, this thing here, this is now a, a, a war, an orphaned piece of property right here, why, I, I don't understand, because this wasn't part of this lot.
This shows you the current lots, I printed this out, because there were questions about the zoning on the original draft, this is, this is the current breakout of lots, weird.
This is a new line, too.
Yeah, because this line going across here and over there, I know.
Imagine that, you have a similar name to this guy.
Oh, dear.
And they're naming that, that this is seven thousand square feet, so it's like...
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know what they're doing there.
Well, except this, this adds into this.
Now they, now they can adopt it, now they can sell it to that person, yeah.
But then, but then they've already said that this is, is part of this district already anyways, I think, if I remember correctly, so even though it's a separate parcel...
EPD, right.
This is all part of the EPD, even though it's a separate parcel, but now there's actually two parcels here, as far as I can tell.
They can, they can put them together at a later...
Yeah, they can do anything they want.
Well, they can't do anything.
But not with that weird piece of parcel.
Eventually, what will happen is we will get this, all this will get surveyed out.
Right.
This part will get resurveyed out.
Alright, any other questions? Do we have a motion to endorse this ANR?
Paul, you motioning?
Can I, can I do that, because I'm a butter to this?
I wouldn't, no.
That's what I thought, too, I know it. Well, that's why I...
I don't want you to mess up, actually, why don't you abstain, too?
Yeah, hey, listen, if you sell me the burn, I'll abstain.
No, I'm not even gonna vote for it, I'm gonna vote against it.
Rachel, can you just make sure that, um, Paul, it's noted that Paul is...
To endorse the ANR, it's in front of us, there's no legal reason why we can't, so, that's all I'm asking. Uh, John, excuse me, we're in the middle of a meeting, um, any discussion about this?
I wasn't talking.
You wasn't?
You had that suspicious looking face on.
No, I was just like...
All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
All those abstain?
Aye.
Five, one, one.
And state for the record.
I'm a butter.
I did, I did.
I'm a butter.
That's what we were chatting about up over here, chatting up and down.
Now, is that yours, or?
No, it's Pat's.
Which is with two Ts, by the way, a butter.
Instead of, you know, like butter, you can spread on the bread.
You mean, you're leaving now?
Yes.
What do you, how do you get to get out, leave, really?
Do we have a motion to, uh...
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
No.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, shut it down.